Counselor Azadi, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Not hearing in here.
We don't have audio on him in here.
Counselor Azadi, could you give us a sound check again, please?
Hello, hello, hello.
We're hearing him out there, we're not hearing him in here.
You can bump it in there.
Counselor Azadi, can you give us another sound check, please?
Hello, hello, hello.
We're hearing him out there, we're still not hearing him in here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, we're getting you in council chambers, but not in the boardroom for some reason. So it's very, very faint in the council chambers, but difficult here. Bump up the volume.
I could scream really loudly.
That'll work. You say again?
I said I could scream really loudly, if that helps.
That's audible, but not right.
Should we go out there?
It's up to you all.
I mean, we're only on here for half an hour. It's less than that.
Okay.
He can hear us, so. Any questions for tonight's meeting?
Counselor Baker?
Every year, we do an interest rate calculation. And the interest rate calculation is for improvements that the cities made infrastructure that we then charge a developer when he develops a piece of land, right? What's that called?
That's correct.
Okay.
That is called the recovery rate.
Recovery rate. How long does that go for? Because we build infrastructure in advance of really developments. And then if a developer comes on, he gets charged his really proportional share of what he would have contributed had he done it at the time. And that's what we charge the interest rate on. How long does that extend? Because I doubt it goes on forever, right?
I don't know if we have the people here to answer that.
Typically part of the agreement that we make with the developer.
Yeah, there's two elements. Council sets that rate periodically, if not annually, and I think you just.
Right, we do it annually because the interest rates go up and down.
And you're asking for each developer what the contribution?
No, 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 I'm saying, like, we have some roads in original Westminster that we've done, but we're not going to charge really developers there like a recovery rate, are we?
Oh, I see. I understand your question. Counselor, we'll have to get back to you on that in terms of how it works for old infrastructure, and if there's a cutoff point for.
Really, one would think that there must be some time level that it runs, and if they wait beyond that, they can develop lots that have sat in original Westminster for 50 years without running afoul of them.
Yes.
Where, like in our newer sections of town, like I would imagine when we did that development by the Lowes at 136 Brooks Farm or something, I would imagine they were charged some kind of development recovery fee, weren't they? Because of what we had done on Huron, because we did Huron.
Is there anybody in attendance that can speak to that? If so, please come forward.
City manager. Thank you, counselor. So yes, for the Foster Farms development, they have recoveries they have to pay on their development, and they'll pay those at the time of plat.
Okay, they'll pay at this time of plat. And that's only, you know, like, North Huron has only been there for a little less than 20 years. So how much longer would they, could they have waited before they would have been, had to pay that really recovery fee and rate?
So easement, or recoveries are charged interest up to a maximum of 50% of the value of the recovery. And so it accrues at a certain interest rate. I can't quote exactly what that is, but they accrue up to that 50% of the total value of the recovery, and then it stops and caps out right there.
Okay, and do they pay, okay, the 50% then? So they pay the 50%?
Yeah.
And the interest?
So they'll pay the whole recovery, and then the interest, and interest is capped at a maximum of 50% of the value of the recovery.
Oh, so they pay the whole recovery?
Correct.
Gotcha.
But the recovery retires at a certain point, right?
No, so the public recovery, so we actually allow recoveries to be charged both on public infrastructure and on private infrastructure. Public infrastructure never retires. Private infrastructure can retire after 10 years, depending on the way it's set up.
That's what I was remembering, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Council reports?
I had sent, I don't have any meetings that I had, but I did send an email to council and staff asking if we could take an opposed position on HB 23-1190. It's called Affordable Housing Right of Refusal. And it basically, if you're selling property and it says residential or mixed-use multifamily property, it gives the right of purchase of a property to local government, and it lays out all the different forms of government that are allowed to do it. But basically, my understanding of it is it would allow government to come in if you're selling your property. And I think it even gives the requirement that you let the government know that you're selling your property, so that they could come in, purchase the property, as long as they make it affordable housing for 50 years. I think, to me, reading this policy, it's not good policy. It's taking people's private right on their private property and saying that the government's going to interject itself if you sell your property, so that they can make it affordable housing. I don't see how that lends itself to even allow affordable housing if the government's going to start playing any more. So I don't know how much support it has, but I certainly think it's against the stance that we've taken as a council. And I would think that it makes sense for us to at least make a stance on it and oppose that.
Mayor Protem, just some updated information. CML was able to negotiate an opt-out clause for that particular language as it was written. They agreed to that opt-out clause. That's now been supported by CML, so CML supports the language with the opt-out clause. And so therefore, it did not raise to the level of bringing that to the council for any concern or consideration, because CML was to negotiate a workable solution, if you will. Either Teresa Boko or Chris Lindsay could speak more to that, but that's the gist.
I'd be curious who can opt out.
Local government can opt out.
Yeah. So with that, I still would ask that we oppose it, because it still doesn't cover the private property. And I appreciate CML's fact, because CML's, their stat is to protect local control. So I would imagine why that then falls off of their radar. But for us, our duty is to upright the, we all took an oath to uphold the Constitution. Constitution protects property rights. To me, this still infringes on people's property rights.
So question, I don't know how time-sensitive the position is, whether this item is coming on for a hearing or a vote this week, but if council would like to put it on an upcoming agenda, staff could research the legislation and provide, I think, more detail. I don't know that staff has already done all the research on this legislation, so I just want to put it out there as an option. We could add it to an upcoming agenda and have staff do some research for you.
For me, I can only speak for myself, and obviously it takes three more people. To me, there's no equation of this that is government's place. So to me, this is a no. I'm happy to hear more research on it, if other people need that to make a decision. But for me, this is against, you know, the principles, I believe, about property rights.
I would agree with really Mayor Protem. I would take the pose right away. Local government, they can bid like any other pro of the respective buyer. They don't need an advantage.
Just a question, can the council take action? Since this isn't on the agenda?
Well, I think it's to tell our lobbyists, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, that's something that in the past, we've even done by email, because my understanding is it's not a formal action that we make policy on, so we're allowed a little bit more flexibility versus something that we, is that correct?
And I believe it's timeliness is part of that analysis, because if there's a hearing this week, and next Monday doesn't work, then getting a position to the lobbyist is time-critical before following Monday. So that's the reason I was asking as to whether there was a vote this week or a hearing this week.
An understanding is why I raised the flag, understanding how late we are in the session. When we get to this point in the session, things have a tendency to fly through, sometimes on Fridays, and I would hate to lose the ability to make a voice. I mean, that doesn't mean that if, you know, we hear something different and responsible ones reach out to us and have a conversation, that we couldn't change our mind. But I think making a statement, if I have three other votes, makes sense to me.
Did you find something online, or?
There was a Senate vote scheduled for today. I'm not, I don't have any detail beyond that listed on the schedule.
Our lobbyist has informed us it was laid over today in the Senate on second reading, so that's where it stands right now. I don't, I'll check to see if it has a date coming up. Upcoming schedule just reflects what they had on today. So we can follow up with Ms. Abbot on that. On the extension.
Nay.
I agree. Yeah, what is?
Support a position of opposed.
Correct.
So where are we?
What am I saying? Four, supporting to oppose.
Supporting to oppose. Good to go? Okay, thank you.
For what it's worth, I think it also sets a precedent that is harmful to not only just developers, but property owners, because it takes so long to, for, I think they had something like three months or something.
They have 120 days to close. I mean, typically, you have 30 to 45 days before you close, so then if the government comes in and buys it for all the reasons they don't like it, on top of that, then they have 120 days before they have to close, meaning you're going to be stuck there with your property. I mean.
And those go faster, anyway.
So.
Is that an oppose or a support?
Support.
She's with us, so six.
Support the opposed.
But we didn't ask, we should probably ask Counselor.
Counselor Azadi, thoughts?
Can you hear me?
Speak up, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, but faintly.
You can?
Yes.
Is this to support the opposed, or oppose the support? Which one?
Oppose.
Support the opposed.
I don't think there's any urgency to be voting on this right now, so I do not.
Okay, you've got six.
Just a quick report, just speaking of opposed. So Dr. Cog took a, forwarded a resolution to oppose Senate Bill 23-213 on Wednesday, so, and it did pass, so.
Anyone else?
I spent an interesting week gathering data and found out that the Boulder, really Patasso Water Plant, the one that we had talked about really last year, has three-and-a-half-foot deep filters. And they figure that they're good, well, indefinitely. I found out that the Fort Collins Water Plant has three-and-a-half-foot filters, and they feel they're good indefinitely. And I talked to Mr. Oak, old king of, I mean, the Trujillo down at the Pueblo Water Plant, and they have three-and-a-half-foot filters, and they feel they're good indefinitely. It was very interesting information that I had never heard before.
All right. Can we ask before we go?
Can we ask before we go?
Obie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, uh, the mayor wants to know how, uh, you're gonna notify her that you wanna speak. Are you just gonna raise a hand?
I could raise my hand to the screen.
Yeah, or, um, there's an emoji that you can do to, either your hand or some other way, and I'll let her know right now.
Welcome to everyone. We thank you for coming and would like to remind you all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted at the back of the room. We ought to make sure you feel welcome and remind all that there's an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting, then that threats and intimidation are prohibited. Signs and placards are prohibited in council chambers, and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles or doorways, um, nor shall the doorways be blocked. If you have something to share, please go outside of the rooms and do that. Tonight, we have, um, more hearings than I think I've ever done in one evening. We wanna be, go through this process and make sure everybody's heard. That means no clapping in between anybody that is speaking because every, um, voice counts. I will remind you as we're going through this because it's a little different this time. Um, where, if you're here because of, uh, hearing or an annexation hearing, you will speak at that time, and so I'll keep reminding you when it's time, um, other than just coming to the podium and talking as a citizen for general things. So, let's get to roll call, please. Counselor Baker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Here.
Counselor Emmons.
Present.
Counselor Izadi.
Here.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Counselor Nermella.
Here.
And Counselor Seymour.
Here.
That brings us to the minutes of March twenty-seventh. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting as presented.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved in second to pass the minutes of March twenty-seventh. Is there any further discussion?
I think I need to amend my, my thing, my sheet here says February thirteenth. I think this is old sitting here. So, what, what?
March twenty-seventh, twenty?
So, I would amend for March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay. And that's still a second?
Yes.
Okay, voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to presentations. Mayor Protem and Counselor Emmons will be presenting Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Could I get the representatives from CASA and Ralston House to join us up front?
Is it, hello? Can you hear? I don't think, is it working?
Yes.
I'm gonna go ahead and have you introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Jennifer with Ralston House.
And I'm Lindsay Salas, the CEO for CASA of Adams and Broomfield Counties.
I think it's on. No? Yeah? Can you hear it? Is this one a little louder? Okay, so the reason that both, uh, Lindsay and I are up here is this is something that's very important to both of us. If you didn't know, uh, Counselor Emmons actually serves as a CASA and has for many years. Um, Ralston House is actually an organization that, um, I've been affiliated with for a long time, as well as CASA. Uh, my wife served on the Board of Directors for, um, Ralston House, as well as our former mayor, uh, Sights served with you, our former city manager, Don Trip, and we have a really good, long history with both of these organizations, and so, um, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and so we have some stats that I would like to share. Um, so these are national stats, and so it's really just showing you how prevalent the, the problem is with kids who are, um, victims of abuse. So, one in seven girls and one in twenty-five boys, uh, will be sexually abused before their eighteenth birthday, which is a very staggering, um, upsetting number. And so what these two organizations, I actually would like if you each would kinda share what your organization does since you're here.
Maybe, test, there we go, okay. Okay, um, so thank you so much for inviting us to speak. Um, just wanted to say good evening to Mayor, Mayor Protem, ca- city council members and to city manager. Um, first and foremost, just I appreciate the highlight of this most important month for, um, Child Abuse Prevention Month. Um, and at CASA, as you mentioned, we are court-appointed, uh, volunteer advocacy for children and youth in the child welfare system. We see firsthand, um, how child abuse neglect impacts not only our children, but really the community as a whole. Uh, just last year, we served, um, nearly eighty children for the city of Westminster who experienced abuse and neglect. By recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Month, you are helping to increase awareness in the community about the importance of strengthening families, supporting parents, and building better futures for the children in Westminster. Um, also, I just wanted to add a quick note, um, just inviting everybody to our upcoming Light of Hope Luncheon. Um, and we are so grateful for the city of Westminster for, um, continuing partnership and sponsoring that event, but it is scheduled for April twenty-seventh. Um, that luncheon is really going to be a deeper dive into the mission of what CASA entails. Um, we'll have a former youth speak, and our keynote speaker, um, was also formerly in the child welfare system, and we'll share his story as well. So it'll be a really great, um, opportunity just to hear more about the mission. And then in addition, uh, we are just so thankful to be up here with Ralston House, um, an incredible community partner, um, that really just, uh, is, is there when the children need them. We have so many youth that overlap, uh, between our agencies, um, and they have just been, uh, fantastic. We actually do our training, uh, for Ralston House as well. So we truly value the partnership, and with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Before you, you leave, tell them about the blue pinwheels they're seeing. Oh, okay, then tell, tell people about the pinwheels. See, I see him.
Okay, if I don't do the microphone? Okay, perfect. So, Ralston House is a child advocacy center, and what that means is we work directly with law enforcement and child protective services when there's been a report of abuse. That can be physical abuse, sexual abuse, witness to a violent crime, human trafficking, anything that happens to a child where that child needs to be interviewed. They come to Ralston House as opposed to going to the police station, which can be very intimidating. So our, we're a third-party nonprofit, and our design is to be not re-traumatizing for that child. So it's a house-like setting. We operate in Jefferson, Gilpin, Broomfield, and Adams County. Our house that really serves Broomfield and Adams County is up off of, it's in Northland, off of one hundred and twelve. Blue pinwheels are the symbol for Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we actually are partnering with the Westminster Rec Center. If you'd like to purchase a pinwheel for five dollars, they've been supporting us. And so, interesting to your stat, cause our stats for twenty-twenty-two is seventy-eight children interviewed at Ralston House. We're part of, that, we're part of Westminster community. We interviewed eleven hundred overall throughout twenty-twenty-two. And that number goes up every year, but it's actually a good thing. It means more kids are being heard, and they're getting seen, and they're getting out of the trouble they're in. So we actually want to increase our numbers every year, and it's support from the community like this that we are able to do that. So thank you so much for recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Month.
And if people wanted to volunteer, because we're looking for volunteers always, where would they go?
Yeah, so, um, CASAseventeenth.org is the CASA website, and so, uh, when you get on there, it'll have volunteer opportunities, and you can check that out and just, um, understand a little bit more about the CASA role and what it entails. Is that, um, it is pretty, um, in-depth, so you do have to go through thirty hours' worth of training, go through a background check, um, an application process, and a, um, pretty, uh, in-depth screening, uh, interview process as well. So, uh, it is, uh, very intimate. The average case lasts a year and a half. And so, we really do need CASA volunteers, so thank you so much, Lindsay, for partaking in that, that piece of it as well. Uh, but we also need community support in general. So, share awareness. If you think of somebody that you're hearing, we're hearing us speak about this, and you think might be a good fit, please refer them over to Ralston House or CASAseventeenth.org. Um, and we are, would be so grateful for, um, the, the help and the advocacy as well.
So, uh, again, thank you both for what you do and for your organizations. Very great organizations. Um, one thing I would add to that I know Ralston House does, if you're a member of, somewhere that, um, serves children, they will do training to make sure that, uh, folks who shouldn't be around children are there, and they, they help you set up good rules and stuff, um, in order to make sure you have good policies in place to protect kiddos. So, um, good, good organizations can't speak enough about them, and if you have money or time, I would direct you to either of them. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and read this proclamation. Uh, whereas every child deserves to grow up in a nurturing environment free from harm and fear, whereas all children do not receive appropriate care, in fact, too many children become victims at the hand of abusive perpetrators. And whereas, the responsible person would agree that every, even one abused child is too many, and it is up to the commu- us as a community to tirelessly work to end the abuse of children through awareness and action, and whereas Westminster has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child abuse and help the parents obtain, obtain the assistance they need. And whereas effective child abuse prevention and advocacy programs such as Ralston House and CASA of Adams and Broomfield Counties succeed because of the partnership among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies in the business community, and whereas our community is stronger when all people become aware of child abuse prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe, nurturing environment. Now therefore, I, Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, and urge the city of Westminster to work collaboratively to increase their efforts and to support families and prevent child abuse. Signed, this tenth day of April twenty-twenty-three, Nancy McNally, Mayor. Can I get a picture with all four of you?
Sure.
We can go right here and.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And would, um, our, I know we have two people coming down for Westminster Volunteer Week. Meet me down front. Any volunteers that volunteer in any way in Westminster, come on down with us. I see some of you not getting up. Mr. Stimson? Mr. Stimson? Yoohoo! Your volunteers, come on up. How are you?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Martha Hines. I'm the volunteer coordinator for the city of Westminster, and I have the pleasure of, um, getting to meet all of our city volunteers, and I must say that we have some of the most dedicated, kind, and generous volunteers who really care about the community and wanna help in any way possible, and we are here to honor them in, um, a small way for everything that they do, cause what they do is just so grand. Um, so thank you for being here tonight, and thank you so much for everything that you do.
Let's pass the microphone, and you tell us who you are, where you volunteer.
Ranso Catta, Police Department.
Ellen Consino, Adopta Street, Westy Fest, Miscellaneous.
Ralph Pullman, uh, Snowbuster.
Judy Smith, Bull's House.
George Smith, I'm a historical researcher at the Despain House.
Becky Emily with the Open Space Program.
Dennis Emily, the Open Space.
Alan Farb, Homeless Outreach.
Chris Stimson, Chair of the Environmental Advisory Board. As part of that, we're one of the groups that's gonna be taking part in the Great Global Cleanup Day on, uh, April twenty-second, cleaning up the city.
Well, thanks to each one of you for everything that you do, and to our city for having a volunteer program. Not every city has a volunteer program, so. Whereas, the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that changes the world. And whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations. And whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference. And whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. And whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. And whereas experience teaches us. and whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems; and whereas our country's volunteer force of more than sixty-three million is a great treasure; and whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now therefore, I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, Colorado, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April sixteenth through the twenty-second, 2023, City of Westminster National Volunteer Week, and urge my fellow citizens to volunteer in their respective communities. By volunteering and recognizing those who serve, we can come together to make a difference. Thank you to each one of you, and I know we have over six hundred, I think I read, that volunteer, and all of those hours make many dollars that we don't have to spend as a city, but you give your tireless hours for. And so on behalf of the city and all of our City Council, thank you for all that you do and the time you volunteer and those listening in our cities. So Martha, I will hand you this proclamation. Would you get pictures, or what would you like?
I'd love a group photo. So we can go behind the railing. This is going to open real quick. Yeah, if you don't mind, we'll do two rows, all at once. There we go. Yeah, feel free to use that. Excellent. Martha, I've got to make sure you're there. All right, can I get you in the retro? Hank, you should go this way. There we go. Yeah, because it's all contrast and colors, the whole bit. Perfect. All right, everyone looks great. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you all.
Counselor C. Marlborough, give the next proclamation.
And do we have Mr. McCoy from Forestry here? And anyone else who wishes to come down with him?
Everyone, my name is Brian McCoy. I'm the city forester. And I just would like to encourage everybody to plant drought-tolerant diverse trees. We've got emerald ashbore out there, putting about seventy thousand trees at risk. So try to preserve your tree. If you can't preserve it, please replace it with a diverse tree.
Took the speech right out of my mouth, so. The other part of that, too, is with the emerald ashbore. Part of infrastructure, February thirteenth, City Council passed an addition to the Westminster Municipal Code naming trees as critical infrastructure, and they are. They prevent erosion, they help with major weather events. And then, plus then, the diversity of the cover that we have here. It's amazing, if you look at the foliage that we have in our city and how amazing it is. The emerald ashbore, we've had a couple presentations on that. And as a liaison to Parks, Rec, Library, and Open Space, we're talking about that at every meeting, because it is something that is going to have a devastating effect on our city. But we know and we can watch, at least we're not on the East Coast or Midwest. There's been a lot of lessons learned, and there's some hope for trees that are not affected. So thank you for being part of that solution. All right, today's proclamation is for Arbor Day. And whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day called Arbor Day be set aside for the planting of trees; and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world; and whereas trees can reduce erosion of precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and provide habitat for wildlife; and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community; and whereas these tree benefits must be protected from the threat of emerald ashbore and enhanced by planting diverse trees; and whereas Westminster has been recognized as Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue to do planting trees thirty-eight years in a row. Now, therefore, I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, do hereby proclaim April twenty-first, 2023, as Arbor Day in the city of Westminster, and call upon the people of Westminster to support efforts to protect our trees, to support our city's urban forestry program, and further urge all residents to plant diverse trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Signed this tenth day of April 2023, Nancy McNally, Mayor.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Next, Counselor Namela, to present proclamation designating April twenty-second as the city's of Westminster's Earth Day.
You can see we have a theme. Is this on? Did it? Oh, okay, sorry.
Hello, Patty.
Well, just, so this is also the Great Global Cleanup Week in addition to Volunteer Week, and Patty is involved in all of this. And I have enjoyed participating in this over the years. And so April twenty-second is Earth Day. And this week, I will just say, there's now about a billion people participating in Earth Day activities versus when it started in nineteen seventy with just twenty million. So we're moving along. But I'm going to hand it over to Patty, who will talk about all the details.
Thank you. I appreciate that. First of all, I'd like to thank the city of Westminster for their support of the Great Global Cleanup. This event has been going on for thirty-nine years, and I think that that is an impressive amount of support from our city to beautify our community and to bring us all together. I'd also like to recognize our sponsors and the donators who are making this a more fun event, which is Highland Hills Park and Recreation District, the Waste Management, and O'Toole's Garden Center. But of course, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the volunteers who are actually going out there with their helping hands to actually clean up the trash in our community. Right now, we have one thousand one hundred and seven people signed up for this event to go out in our city with their orange bags, and it is an impressive sight. So I hope that if you do see them on Saturday, April twenty-second, you'll give them a honk or a wave and let them know that you appreciate their efforts. I've done this event for many, many years, and I'm seeing people who have come back year after year after year with their families, and now their families are grown, they're bringing their grandkids. It's amazing. You can still register for this event by contacting me. This event is on our website. You just call me, we can look at the map together, and I will register you for a site. With over eleven-hundred people signed up, you can imagine that we don't want them all in one place. So we spread them out throughout the city, and it's a very simple process. And after that cleanup, we celebrate everyone's efforts with a cookout at City Park Recreation Center at one hundred and fourth and Sheridan from eleven to one, which is another really fun way for us all to get together and celebrate. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. All right, I will read the proclamation. Whereas Earth Day is an important date for environmentally conscious citizens all over the world in accordance with the theme Invest in Our Planet; and whereas the city of Westminster has proven itself to be dedicated to environmental responsibility and sustainability; and whereas Westminster has planned and organized the Great Global Cleanup in a celebration to bring information, insight, and advice to its participants; and whereas the caring citizens of our community are willing to do their part to learn about various programs available to them. And now therefore, I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, do hereby proclaim April twenty-second, 2023, as Westminster Earth Day Celebration, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to join together to learn, participate, and celebrate the efforts being made, residents and the city. By residents and the city. May I correct that?
Yes, it's yours. Thanks, everybody. Okay, that brings us to public comment. City Clerk Fitch, do we have anybody tonight? We have one speaker who signed up, Tom Lampeau. Welcome. And if you turn the microphone up, and I think somebody had taken that area and made it down. Can we make it up if we need to? There you go. You know how to work it. Thank you. Just be sure you speak into it so that the people listening can hear.
All right. So hello, and I hope all your families are well. I'm here tonight to pray for this meeting in the city of Westminster. First off, thank you to all the volunteers. It's incredible what they do for the city and for the community. Before I pray, I want to talk about the times we are in and what we can look forward to. So these are the days of Haman. Haman is found in the Book of Esther, which is found in the Old Testament. The main characters in the Book of Esther are King Ahosorus, Haman, Esther, and Malachi. King set Haman's seat above all others. So Haman found favor with the king. Esther is the king's queen, and Malachi is Esther's cousin. They are Jews and found favor with the king and God. Through a series of events, Malachi finds disfavor with Haman. Haman sets a plan to hang Malachi, sets out a plan to have all the Jews in the land killed. When the king hears of Haman's plans, he sends Haman and his sons to the gallows, promotes Malachi to Haman's position. A decree is then written to reverse Haman's plan, gives permission to the Jews of the land to destroy all those that had planned on destroying them. So these are the days of Haman. The takeaway from the story is that what is planned for us by the evil one, our enemies, will be reversed, and we will prevail, and those against us will perish. God is in control. Let us invite our God to this meeting in the city of Westminster. Heavenly Father, in Jesus' precious and holy name, we invite you here to be among us. We need your presence here with us, guide us in all we do. In Luke eleven, nine through ten, it states, "So I say to you, ask and it will be given to you; seek and you will find; knock and it will be opened to you. For everyone who asks receives, and he who seeks finds; and to him who knocks, it will be opened." Father, our community is large and diverse. Our needs are different. We are different places in our life journey. Our influences are different, our experiences are different, we are different. Unite us, Father, with your word. Let us find commonality in you. In Philippians four, eight through nine, it states, "Finely brethren, whatever things are true, whatever things are noble, whatever things are just, whatever things are pure, whatever things are lovely, whatever things are of good rapport; if there is any virtue, and if there is anything praiseworthy, meditate on these things. The things which you learned and received, and heard, sought, and saw in me, these do, and the God of peace will be with you." Father, we lift up the children in our community. They are special to you. In Matthew nineteen fourteen, Jesus said, "Let the little children come to me, and do not forbid them, for of such is the kingdom of heaven." You want them to press into you. You want them to have your truth as their solid foundation. In Proverbs twenty-two, six, it states, "Train up a child in the way he should go, and when he is old, he will not depart from it." So I ask, Father, that all the children of Westminster be given your word as a solid foundation, that your word would be alive in them throughout their days. In your precious and holy name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Finally, members of council, you know this community. Are there any specific needs that should be lifted up in future prayers? Okay, thank you. You guys have a good day.
You too. Thank you.
That was the last person we had signed up to speak live, and we have no voicemails tonight.
Okay. And if there's anyone that has something besides the public hearings that we're going to be hearing later on, or the annexations, now's the time to get up if you weren't here when the sign-up happened. See No One, that brings us to City Manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilors. We'll run through a couple things for the community, for those that are in attendance. Certainly want you to listen up to some of these things that are going on and those that are online. Certainly hope that you can find some meaning in some of these updates. But first slide, please. Kind of on a theme, Leave No Trace in Westminster. So Westminster's partnership with Leave No Trace kicks off with the 2023 Great Global Cleanup. That event is on Saturday, April twenty-second, as mentioned. Our purpose is to preserve our natural resources for future generations of Westminster residents. The city is joining this national program to prioritize protecting public lands. If you want to learn more about Leave No Trace and its seven guiding principles, you can visit the website shown there, www.lnt.org. And you can certainly register for the Great Global Cleanup on the city's website. And I would offer that, you know, every day ought to be the Great Global Cleanup here in Westminster. As you drive around the city, I was on Westminster Boulevard today, just on the northeast side of the bridge over US thirty-six, and someone had decided on that nice piece of open space to dump a microwave oven. So, you know, there are better places for that stuff to go. The city's happy to help. If you see problem areas, please let us know. If you get an opportunity to get out there with your bag and just police stuff up and keep our community looking great, we would certainly appreciate it. So again, Leave No Trace. Next thing, downtown Westminster three-D model, which is right out here in the foyer or atrium. That model has recently been updated to reflect what our current building completions look like in downtown Westminster. And so the gray shaded structures are complete, ones that are out there now, and the white ones are the future or the vision of those buildings in our downtown. And so check that out on your way out or during a break this evening. And then last thing, you'll see a little picture off on the right-hand side of the screen. We've got some new wayfinding signage in our downtown. Those have been put up here over the last couple weeks, four new signs. Will assist getting people as they come into the downtown two designated parking areas. And so a nice improvement there. Next slide, please. Some westy winds. Last week, I think it was Thursday afternoon, we had our ice cream social, and that was down in Historic Westminster. We had six hundred community members that joined the fun and the activities at the Irving Street Library and the Swim and Fitness Center. I got a chance to visit both sites, and just a spectacular opportunity for the community to come enjoy a nice warm afternoon, some treats, and learn about what the city's doing. And some of those updates are the new Irving Street Library Playground, and then also the Swim and Fitness Center with an accessibility and update to kind of the layout and the flow of that facility. Not to mention two firsts. First of all, the city's aquatic programs, and I think the fun one this summer is going to be the trapeze program done down at Irving Street Park there. And so that's going to be fun. I've decided to volunteer Mr. Andrews to be the first one to ride that. I'm a little afraid that I might throw out a back or hurt something. So anyway, but looking forward to that. Westy Connection and Information for Residents on City Programs were also distributed to the crew. And then Police Department doing great things, as always. They launched the Youth Outreach Program. This is a program for elementary and middle school students. It helps to build relationships with students during recess, lunch, and other activities deemed appropriate by Westminster Public School staff. Orchard Park and Colorado STEM Academies hosted these first outreach activities. And so great initiative by the Westminster Police Department. Next slide. Some things to know, inclusivity board meeting is this Wednesday. It's a hybrid meeting here at City Hall in the CMO conference room. It goes from six to seven-thirty for anybody who would like to tune in. Parks, Rec, Libraries, and Open Space Advisory Board Meeting is Thursday, April thirteenth, six to eight PM here at City Hall. It's in PRL Conference Room B. That's downstairs on the main level. City Council Study Session next Monday night, six-thirty, in the Executive Boardroom here. And then College Hill Library, I mentioned this last Monday, but they're celebrating their twenty-fifth birthday on Tuesday, April eighteenth. We encourage folks to come to the library there at College Hill during the week of April seventeenth through the twenty-first. And there are a lot of activities going on, and gifts, and trinkets, and things like that for all ages. Please come visit and help them celebrate. Westminster Archive Center is hosting its grand opening celebration. That's on Tuesday, April eighteenth, from three to five PM at College Hill Library. And so some- And so some things to keep you focused and busy. Next slide. And as always, you know, the city remains accessible, responsive, certainly transparent and accountable. If you have issues for us, please contact us. You can contact me and the City Manager's Office. That's my phone number, 303-658-2006. You can email me directly at mfreitag@cityofwestminster.us. There are folks in the audience who have taken me up on that, and I'm happy to respond, and will try to do so in a very timely manner. As always, encourage you to follow us on Twitter, like us on Facebook. You can check us out on Instagram, or you can ring our bell at Next Door. Pending any questions, that's all I have this evening.
Any questions from council? I see none, thank you. That brings us to City Council Comments. Counselor Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. Last meeting, I spoke of the duty of City Council to really safeguard the assets of the people of Westminster. This really safeguarding of our assets is one of our foundational duties. For the next two weeks, this council must prepare to meet, to do that duty. We prepare by seeing the true situation that Westminster finds itself in, really concerning our water, 2025 water treatment responsibilities. I find severe problems with what we have done so far, in spite of the fact that we have spent hundreds of hours in doing this. I think we have been fed a stacked deck. I think items of information have been placed way out of proportion to what their true risk is. I think other items of information have been completely left out. And because of this, I don't think we are prepared right now to make a rational decision on that, a rational, considered decision on that. I've tried to be discreet, yet keep my colleagues informed, but I don't think that has worked very well. One of the first problems I find is when we are making decisions not based on quantitative numbers and charts, but on red dots, yellow dots, and green dots. And sometimes the green dots have a shade of yellow on them. I don't think that provides us sufficient information. I don't think that puts things into true proportion. Evaluations must also be inclusive. Let me give you an example. In our talks, we ended up with four alternatives that were offered to us, okay? Two of the alternatives had poison pills attached to them, making them unworkable, or at least unreally palatable. And while the remaining two, like the rehabilitation of the Semper plant, even though on January 23rd, our engineers told us it would last 50 years, accepting regulatory risk, two weeks later, it was said it would only last 10 to 20 years. And when I asked, "Did we discover some information in those two weeks that really reduced the life expectancy of Semper from 50 to 10 to 20?", I was told, "No." And then when I asked, "So why weren't we told sooner in the process?" Because we've been doing this process a year, almost. Well, I guess it is a year, really. A year. We must have, and if we didn't discover this problem, what I would call a significant problem, between January 23rd and February 6th, when did we discover it? And why weren't we informed immediately of that? Number two, the risks of wildfire in the drainage basin and PFAs and PFOAs has been radically borne, pushed out of proportion. PFAs, the most sensitive detecting equipment we have, measures parts per trillion, and we were worried about EPA regulations of parts per quadrillion. Three magnitudes of order below our detection. How can that be a risk? Right now, PFAs are undetectable in our water. Wildfire risks. I mean, the previous stewards of our water system have taken smart, foresighted steps to minimize that. We've always had that wildfire risk, and we have contingency plans in place to minimize that. And furthermore, even if we were unfortunate enough to have a wildfire in the watershed, and then thunderstorms brought down the sediments and all of the combustion products of that wildfire, and we weren't timely enough in closing the gates to let the bulk of the bad tasting water by, the worst possible thing that could happen is odor and taste. It has no bearing on the health, safety of our water. Now, odor and taste are important, but they need to be kept in proportion to the price tag. And then this week, in my frustrations, I began to call other water treatment providers. And when I called the Pleblo, because one of the problems with Semper was it has three-and-a-half-foot deep filter beds. And when I called the Pleblo, Pleblo runs three-and-a-half-foot deep filter beds, and they expect to run them indefinitely. They have complete confidence in the depth of their filter bed. I mean, the Potassop plant, which was just redone four, five years ago by HDR, has three-and-a-half-foot deep filter beds. They expect that to run indefinitely. They have a 20-year capital plan as they reinvest in the plant and keep it going. The Fort Collins Water Provider has three-and-a-half-foot deep filter beds. They have no problems, they have no fears of regulatory thing against them, and they expect to run them indefinitely. As a matter of fact, the engineer there was telling me how they're in the marvelous case of being surrounded by other water providers on all sides, so they're not that much worried about growth, which I said, "Hmm, that's similar to our situation, where we are surrounded by water providers on all sides, and we don't have the Damocles sort of growth hanging over our head like other cities do." Now, there is the failure in our pretreatment, in the front end of our Semper plant, okay? It had been a sedimentation basin, and CDHP has ruled that out. But of course, an answer there is to do the same tact that Boulder did with their plant, and put a better front end on the plant at a much, much smaller price. And when it comes to the sludge water, and we do not have the room for really lagoons at Semper, even if we take part of the MSC, we can certainly mechanically process that. And that's an effective, useful, less expensive tool that we have. Also troubling me was what I consider to be misleading and misrepresentation. During those two weeks before the 23rd of January and the 6th of February, I had shared with my colleagues, I had shared with you folks, my concerns. They were important enough that our Mayor Pro Tem asked for a comment from our city engineers about it. And I found the answers misleading, and that's being kind. Specific example is when I said, "Well, did we reassess the West Cliff Open Space Site, an area of roughly 26 acres, on the west side of US 36 rather than on the east?" And when the answer came back, we were told that, "Oh, construction traffic and operational traffic for the plant would have to go through residential neighborhoods." It does not. Somehow, our professional staff conflated the Big Dry Creek Open Space with the West Cliff Open Space. If you go to our open space maps and blow them up, West Cliff Open Space is clearly designated. And I never said a word about Big Dry Creek Open Space. But by adding traffic through residential neighborhoods, by adding the possibility of having to construct a bridge over the Big Dry Creek, certainly made West Cliff look bad, even though it had nothing to do with West Cliff. One of the things that I find an enormous burden for our council is our water enterprise and our sewer enterprise are monopolies. There is no discipline of the free market. There is no control whatsoever. The only control exercised is the control that this council does. We can gouge our customers, and it's my opinion that we've been doing this for several years now. And we're doing this gouging under false pretenses. This, well, this is the conduct and actions of another council, a council that I don't think gave proper study of what they were presented, a council that relied far too much on trust of our professionals. That was a mistake by that council. And let's look at the things they did. They said that our sewer, the Big Dry Creek Sewer Interceptor, which services about 60% of the city, with the Little Dry Creek doing a third, and the Huron doing the balance, was over capacity. It was printed stories in both The Window and The Denver Post. And in our response, we were told that, "Oh, that was an estimate done in 2012," not in 2018, when it was put out and published in the papers, but in 2012, and it was an estimate. And perhaps the reporters got it wrong. Well, that would be interesting, except that if the reporters had messed up, wouldn't our city officials move to the media to correct that mistake? Yet there was never a move to correct. Indeed, there was a move to increase the rates. It was used as a causes belly to increase the rates. And were those rates based on some foundation, on numbers, on facts? Where did the $8.15 tier-two rate came from? Where did the $12.88 tier-three rate come from? There doesn't seem to be any backing. And previously, in this last year, when I asked for backing, I received the most contrived piece of explanation I've seen in a very long time. Because in this explanation, I was told that somehow we can tell the water coming through the plant per 1,000 gallons, some will be in tier one, and it was very inexpensive to treat that, but some will be in tier three, and that's very expensive to treat. How does the water know? It all goes through the same plant.
Counselor Baker, I know under Robert's rule of order, we're to give 10 minutes for a person to speak at the dais. You've gone almost 15, and we've got a huge agenda tonight, so can you wrap up?
We do have a huge agenda, and it's unfortunate that. So let me get, so let me listen to you, because I know sometimes my remarks are interpreted as inflammatory, and I don't want that, okay? What I want us to do is to do what most other cities on the Front Range do, and that's provide reasonably priced water. Fort Collins has $4 water. Denver itself, in their irrigation rate, their tier-two rate, has $4.47 water. Our rates today are arbitrary rates. We pulled them out of the sky. Counselor Emmons actually asked me, "Where did you get these rates from?" And I said, "We pulled them out of the sky because we have no basis to do them on." So even though we may think that 4.5% increase for years, that's something we can't guarantee, that's something we can't promise, that's something we don't have any control over. What we do have control over is how much debt we take on. And here is where I agree with Counselor Nirmela. Student debt is one of the most egregious things that have ever been done, because by using the debt, it bounds students for decades of burden. And if we take on hundreds of millions of dollars of debt on a water plant that we do not need, we will burden our residents into the future with water rates that will harm our city. Thank you for listening.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody who showed up tonight to listen to our meeting. I just want to quickly hit a couple things that I'd like Counselor Baker to think about. You unpacked a lot there. Those rates that you say are just arbitrary, a couple things. One, nobody that approved the rates that you talk about from years past any longer sit on this dais. Matter of fact, I was one of the only ones who was here during those rates, and consequently, I'm the only one who voted against those rates. And I say that to frame the fact that I won't be beat up for rates that I did not approve. And I made it my mission in this position to get us to a place where we came up with reasonable rates. And the rates that we decreased to, and I want to repeat that, we decreased the rates that you mentioned, and I think that's really important for the public to understand when we're looking at this issue, are rates that you agreed to. Everybody, not everybody, there were two people who dissented from that, but you were not amongst the folks that dissented in the decrease of the rates. Those rates were supplied with data about how they came up with those rates. They were supplied with what the future rates potentially could be. We provided a cap of what we said we would not go beyond, which was the 4%, 4.5%. That does not mean that we said we're going to, in perpetuity, say, "You're going to always get 4.5%." And I think that's important for people to think about. So the other couple things I want to quickly hit is, one, I do not disagree with you that safeguarding our assets is vital, and it's a number-one priority and responsibility of this council. And I think that you see it in our strategic plan, that those are things that this entire council, all seven of us, take very seriously. The thing I want you to think about, because it's the only way that we're going to move forward with you on board, and I would like everybody on board when we come to moving this forward, because at some point, and I think most of the council already is doing that, we need to move forward with a solution. But what we always come back to is trust in the folks that you can... And the folks that you can, you bring up in a lot of these things are no longer here, whether they were elected members, whether they were the head of a certain department, whether they were the city manager who used to serve with us. A lot of those folks who made those decisions, who came up with policy that was approved by former councils, are no longer here. So my question to you is, what will it take for you to trust the professional staff? And I don't expect an answer tonight, but I would like an answer at some point because at some point, we do have to trust our professional staff. We have to trust the city manager that we hired this last year. We have to trust the people that he puts in positions to make decisions to educate us with what we need to do moving forward. And the last point I want to bring up to you that I would just think about as I listen to you talk about other cities, I have to imagine that if someone called our city and just started asking questions about the most critical infrastructure that we have for life-giving water, that you may not get 100% of the answer. Because that is, it's more difficult than a phone conversation. They don't know who's on the other end of the phone, even if you say, I'm Counselor Baker from the city of Westminster. And they all have different things that they have to deal with. If you look at Pueblo, I don't know who's in front of Pueblo that treats that water before it gets to them, before it gets through their watershed. I know where ours is. We're the first one in line after the water comes down the hill. So there's so much to unpack in what you're saying that isn't just necessarily one for one that I take into account when I look at these decisions. But again, I'll leave you with, with the trust thing. I really do need to understand if we're going to continue any kind of constructive conversation, how the trust issue gets fixed. Because if the trust issue doesn't ever get fixed, then no answer in my mind seems like it's going to fit what you want out of the, the conversation. But I appreciate the conversation, and with that, we'll get on with our meeting.
Any other counsel? Counselor Izadi, did you have anything for tonight?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to give an update on the Human Services Board. So they met a couple of weeks ago, and they picked a a chair, they picked a vice chair. So the chair, the board chair is Katie Busky, the vice chair is Kathy Busby. They selected a goal that ties to our strategic plan very well. They talked about funding, and we defined a review timeline. So the timeline for the application period for the grants begins on April 17th. That's next week, Monday. That's when the grant application period is launched. The deadline for grant applicants will be June 1st. There will be a meeting where the Human Services Board will meet to review the applications that first week of June, that second week of June. And then throughout the summer, we'll do the interviews, and we will award to recipients early 2024. But the recommendation to City Council will be August 15th as to who gets selected. So that's the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor Protam? Oh, you're ready to move on. All right. Brings us to item 8A, Consent Agenda. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt consent agenda items 8A.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 8A. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Izadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermele?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
We will now hold three public hearings regarding agenda items 10A through G, the tri-state property PDP and ODP, the annexations, comp plan amendments, and rezonings regarding 9889 Alcar Street, 1220 Zunai Street, 7371 West 92nd Avenue, 68th Avenue and Federal Boulevard, and 3431 Moscow Court, and the PDP and ODPs of the Huron Farm Division. Attorney Frankel?
Thank you, Mayor. Dave Frankel, City Attorney. As a preliminary matter, Ms. Madam Mayor, the items that are approaching now on our, our agenda, two of them are quasi-judicial determinations for the City Council to make, and those are the tri-state PDP/ODP requests, as well as the Huron Farm PDP and ODP requests. So I wanted to bring to the City Council's attention, under the Westminster Municipal Code, certainly, council members are welcome to participate remotely. But when we consider quasi-judicial matters, I would ask that there be a motion to approve a city council, or in this case, it's Counselor Izadi, participating remotely because of the extra considerations at, at play with quasi-judicial determination. I would ask that pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113G, City Council vote to permit Counselor Izadi to hear the quasi-judicial items that are on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to allow Counselor Izadi to participate in our public hearings remotely.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to allow Counselor Izadi to participate in the quasi-judicial hearing. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protam Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Izadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermele?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes on the 7-0 vote.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to our first hearing for approval of a preliminary development plan amendment, an official ODP for tri-state subdivision. I will, let's see a clock on my, it's 8:02, and I will open the public hearing. And do we have staff that's going to testify? Thank you.
The posted notices met the minimum quantity required. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to occupants, property owners, and HOAs registered with the city within 1,000 feet of the whole tri-state PUD subdivision. 2,554 notices were mailed. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Here is an aerial, oh, I'm sorry, I guess the presentation is not showing yet. Are you able to see it? No, okay.
We'll pause for a second. Tap dance or tell us a joke?
Is it on a separate window? It was showing that way before. Oh, there it goes. Okay, thank you. Just click enough buttons. Okay, so now you see an aerial map showing the tri-state subdivision and vicinity with the four lots being replanted totaling approximately 57 acres outlined in red. Excuse me, sorry. It is located at the southwest corner of Huron Street and 116th Avenue. The Behavioral Health Hospital Development is going on the 11-acre Lot 2 in the Official Development Plan or ODP Amendment. And you'll see more on the next slide. The tri-state lots 1A and 2 shown at the, at the northeast corner of this development are designated employment flex by the Comprehensive Plan, and Lot 1A has been zoned for office and commercial uses in a planned unit development or PUD since 1981, when the original Preliminary Development Plan or PDP was approved. The amended PDP adds hospital and medical uses for Lot 2, which is the one highlighted there in blue. And the amended ODP for Acadia Hospital on Lot 2 complies with the Comprehensive Plan. Acadia proposes a two-story building of 99,497 square feet, 195 parking spaces, and 56% of the lot landscaped. As stated in the agenda memo, the applicant, the applicant wished to move ahead to public hearings prior to the completion of staff reviews. So staff has recommended eight conditions of approval for both the PDP and the ODP amendments in order to ensure that they will meet all of the approval standards and requirements prior to the issuance of building permits. The architecture uses earth tones of grays, browns, and cultured stone, commonly seen in Colorado and throughout the city. And in Section 11514 of the Westminster Municipal Code, it provides 10 criteria that shall be considered with preliminary development plans and amendments. Generally, they are compliance with the Comprehensive Plan, sound, creative, and innovative, and efficient planning, compatibility with the surrounding development, protection from adverse influences, safe circulation and access, and performance standards. Staff finds that the PDP amendment will meet these standards with the recommended conditions of approval outlined in the agenda memo and attachments. And in Section 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code, it provides 16 criteria that shall be considered with an official development plan or amendment. Generally, that it conforms with the PUD, PDP, and all city codes, ordinances, and, and policies. Exhibits sound planning with any exceptions being warranted. Is compatible with the surrounding area and future development. The landscaping and site design conform with city code and policies. Transportation infrastructure will handle development impacts. Utility infrastructure is adequate to serve the development, and the applicant is in good standing with the city. Staff finds that the ODP amendment will meet these standards with the recommended conditions of approval outlined in the agenda memo and attachments. Staff also finds that conditional approval of the application would meet two of the city's strategic plan priorities. Priority one, to foster and maintain a beautiful, desirable, safe, and environmentally responsible city. And priority three, a shared sense of community. The Planning Commission recommended that the City Council conditionally approve the PDP and ODP amendments as outlined in the agenda memo and attachments by a unanimous vote of 5 to 0. And staff recommends that the City Council hold a public hearing and then conditionally approve the PDP and ODP amendments as outlined in the agenda memo and attachments. And that concludes the staff presentation, and the applicant does have a presentation as well.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protam, counselors, city manager, deputy city manager, and staff. My name is Dr. Jeffrey Woods. I am an operations group president with Acadia Healthcare located in Nashville, Tennessee. In 2001, excuse me, in 2021, we entered into a partnership with what was then SCL Health, now Intermountain Health, to develop, to develop a new behavioral health hospital in the, in the tradition of West Pines and SCL Health, who've served more than 30 years providing exceptional mental health and substance use disorder care for the residents of the greater Denver metro area. The purpose of this partnership is to increase access to care for individuals with mental health and substance use disorder treatment concerns. Acadia Healthcare, just by way of explanation and sort of description, we are the largest provider of mental health and substance abuse services in the United States with more than, close to 260 behavioral health hospitals and treatment centers across 39 states and Puerto Rico. This is the only thing we do, and I can tell you, very passionate about it. Very passionate about making sure that we have access to care for folks who are vulnerable and who are at risk in our communities. In the Adams and Jefferson Counties, there is a bed deficit that's been established, nearly 600 beds. And you see another statistic on the, on the panel there, and it just sort of points to just how extreme the concern is. But I don't need to tell you this. You see it every day on your televisions, you read it in the newspapers, and I'm sure you experience it with your constituents. And that is that suicide is the second-leading cause of death for individuals in Colorado between the ages of 10 and 44. That is a staggering statistic. And the access to care, patients residing for extended periods of time in, in emergency departments, is challenging. Madam Mayor, I did hear your comments about your agenda, so I'm going to move quickly. And I'll leave time for any questions that you all might have. In terms of being a good neighbor and community outreach, several things that I think are important for you to know. We do absolutely believe in partnering with our community. We will have extensive out, we already have had extensive outreach with the community. 9/15, we had a neighborhood meeting. We followed that with a community stakeholders meeting. More than 2,000 mailed notifications went out to the community regarding this project. And as you heard from Amy, we had a Planning Commission unanimous approval for the PUD. We will be offering school outreach programs that include opportunities to educate the educators and the counselors on signs and symptoms of early onset for mental illness or behaviors that perhaps could lead to a bad outcome for our youth. And I have to tell you, I was so happy that I was here today when you had a proclamation for the Ralston House. I have a feeling we're going to be great partners because unlike West Pines, West Pines does not have pediatric services. This new hospital will have both child and adolescent services, and I see a great opportunity to collaborate in the community. We will also provide services for veterans, military members, and their spouses or their dependents. And as a former United States Army commissioned officers, having served eight years, I can tell you that is another area that is very near and dear to my heart. And then close partnerships with law enforcement, crisis teams, and other community mental health centers. The project, I guess I didn't do it, did I? That was that slide. Sorry about that. Let me tell you a little bit about who we treat and who we don't treat because this did come up in some of the comments from the community. Our patients are your neighbors, they're your friends, they're your family. They are the people that you know every day. Now, I don't, I won't ask you to raise your hands, but I certainly can expect that every single one of us in this room have been touched in some way by mental illness or substance use disorder in our family, in our relationships, in our friendships. And so we all have an experience that touches on those things. Those are our patients. Now let me tell you who our patients will not be in this hospital. This is not a forensic facility. We will not be treating the quote-unquote criminally insane. We are not a jail, we're not a prison. So our patients are patients who have depression, anxiety, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia. They may have trauma-related issues related to their work or experiences they've had in their life, particularly our children and our first responders and our military. So these are the patients that we treat in this hospital, our neighbors. The hospital complex will have, I sit on 11 acres of the tri-state complex along, along Huron Street. It is, Huron is the only point of access to this facility, so there won't be traffic coming in from other streets going around the development. The facility will be 144 beds, two stories, approximately 99,000 square feet, 195 parking spaces. We hope to begin construction in Q2 of this year and have construction completed by Q2 of next year. Our estimated costs for the total project costs are about $55 million, and we estimate an approximate $30 million in annual economic impact. We expect to also employ about 265 individuals across the spectrum from housekeepers and dietary staff to nurses and social workers and physicians and behavioral analysts and the whole, the whole crew. So really, really well-paying jobs for individuals of very high professional caliber. We are currently undergoing the building and land disturbance permanent review with the city, and I'll show you a couple of other views of the facility, renderings by the, by our architects. And I will pause there and ask if you have any questions. I will tell you that I do have architects and engineers with me today because I'm a doctor and they're smarter than me in those things. So if there's questions that pertain to them, I'll certainly be happy to introduce them.
Does anyone have questions at this time? Counselor Nermele?
Hi, I am, I'm happy to hear that you're bringing this type of facility into the city. It's much needed. I'm just curious, when I look at the design, it kind of looks more like a prison, especially with respect to the open space areas being walled off and there being no connectivity to the open space on either side of this property. And theoretically, as we've heard, nature is also very healing, so I feel like this is very closed off, and I'm just curious as to know why and if there's some way that we could help the residents connect to our open space a little bit better.
So what you don't see in these illustrations is that the So what you don't see in these illustrations is that the, the outdoor activity spaces that we have, they're highly landscaped, they're very beautiful, they're lush, and so the patients will be able to be in that secure environment. This is a secure facility, so patients are not able to walk in and out of the building. In fact, we have wristbands that the patients wear, our version of a hospital band, so that we know where the patients are located for their safety, so that we can make sure that they're having, you know, appropriate observation while they're in the hospital. Our hospital length of stay is very short, it's about seven to ten days on average, and the patients then return home. We do have a large gymnasium that's part of the hospital as well, so, and I understand we have a rock wall going into that space as well. So we have a number of things that we're incorporating to provide for the physical activity, including occupational and recreational therapists and activity therapists, in order to meet the needs of the patients while they're in that short duration of hospitalization.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else this time? Counselor Emmons?
Quick question, would you ever move to longer care? Because sometimes twenty-one days is not long enough.
So I know that the application refers to twenty-one days as sort of the, the, the high end. The truth is, a patient will stay in the hospital for any duration required to stabilize their, their care. So I think about a geriatric patient often in that situation, or a senior citizen, who may have mild, moderate neurocognitive decline with disturbance of mood and behavior. We go very low and slow with medicines with those patients, engage their response to those medicines, and oftentimes twelve, fourteen days is about the right time for hospitalization for them to be stable. But if they require a longer duration of time, we don't stop treatment just because of a clock. There's no, there's no clock per se. Patients are treated based on their clinical presentation.
Okay, so up to a six-month stay is possible?
It is possible, yes.
Okay.
It's very unlikely, it's very infrequent that that would occur, but it is certainly likely.
Sure, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
I don't have any questions. I do just want to thank you for bringing this to our community. You talked about raising your hand, and this is actually something that my family isn't afraid to share, because we think that breaking the stigma of mental health in children is really important. And having a teenager who's went through that, trying to find care in that pediatric is nearly, almost impossible sometimes. So I appreciate the fact that, I don't appreciate the fact that we need it, but I appreciate the fact that it's, it is coming to our community, because there is a need for it. So I just wanted to-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I would like to go back if I could and readdress Counselor Nubella's comment. We also have off-site activities for patients who can tolerate that, and so there will be opportunities for patients who can clinically tolerate being outside of the hospital to have outside hospital activities. It's not super common, but it is something that will occur. Yes.
I don't see any other comments at this point. We'll ask for community comments, and then I'll see if anybody needs to wrap up.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, go ahead. I just wanted to clarify that with the current plans that we have, they have listed twenty-one days as the maximum stay on their ODP. Excuse me, according to the zoning and the comprehensive, comprehensive plan designation, they could have up to one hundred days, but that is not the plan that is before you right now. It, it's twenty-one days on, on the plan right now.
So how would that work if a patient needed care for longer, but they're violating our code?
Or, or the approved plan. You know, I, I don't know if that's something we could change tonight to be up to one hundred days, but according to the zoning, at least, it could not be more than one hundred.
That brings me to the question, why is that in the code? Aren't we dealing with what people need, not what maybe they need, or what numbers play out? I don't get that at all.
I, I believe it has to do with the definition of residential uses being those that have stays longer than that.
So if this gets, if we, let's say, approve this tonight, does, I mean, that would probably need to require a code change by council, because I don't, I will say this from personal experience, I'll say I was reserving it to, to further thoughts after we hear from the public. But as a CASA volunteer, I've had, out of four of my cases now, two of the parents have been in substance abuse treatment. And I appreciate this coming to Westminster, because it separates the families from seeing their children. And I'm, I'm talking distance. My, my last case, the nearest treatment we, they could find was in Littleton, which is more than forty-five to an hour drive. And so that's concerning that we would, if we approve this, that we, that we would have that stipulation, because I don't want to cut treatment if treatment, if they're getting better, if our, if their patients are getting better, and we're cutting it prematurely because of a code. So I would like to address that.
Mr. Frankel?
So, the applicant's asking for up to twenty-one days-
Currently, yes.
-and the zoning allows for-
Up to-
-no more than one hundred days.
Yes, correct.
So, so if, if the applicant's operations normally do not require more than twenty-one days, and they had to go up to a hundred days, it appears they would still be code compliant. So I think-
My mom was in there for six months, that's why I asked about six months.
So, okay, so if the applicant's asking for twenty-one, and a hundred days as an outside threshold becomes an issue, I, I suppose a request could be made at that point. I don't know if, if it's something the applicant's seeking tonight, particularly if the zoning doesn't allow it.
Counselor Nubella?
Sounds like the zoning allows it, but that this ODP and PDP are actually further limiting it, they're more narrow?
The code allows, excuse me, the code allows up to one hundred days, but, but what they have put on their official development plan is twenty-one days.
So can we just approve it with a condition to change the-
Maximum stay to one hundred days?
The maximum stay to a hundred?
So if a hundred days would be allowable-
Yes.
...with the zoning that's being sought-
Yes.
...or that's in place-
Yes.
...more accurate. I, I think, yes, we could potentially just note that the zoning does allow for up to one hundred days, should, should that be necessary.
Could we ask?
Can we ask the applicant why they're making it twenty-one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When we think of, when we think of a length and duration of hospitalization, we think in terms of average length of stay. And so twenty-one days would be sort of the north end of our average length of stay. Some patients may be there for longer periods of time, some will certainly be there for much shorter periods of time. With an app, with, with our typical average for the general population, the broadest population, is somewhere between seven and ten days. But there are going to be patients that will be an outlier, and it will be one patient or two patients, who may, for various reasons, clinical reasons, need to be in the hospital for a longer duration. It is still an acute-care hospital stay, not a residential stay. Residential suggests that you are subacute, that you no longer have the symptoms that require a hospital level of care. This is a hospital level of care. So I think certainly the one hundred days would be adequate, and if it required going back and looking at the definition of how the code was written to understand whether we're talking about an average length of stay or maximum length of stay, does that, is that for all patients, or is that for any one patient? Because we would not want to be out of compliance over one patient, but more importantly, we would not want to deprive that patient of the care for which they came to receive services. And if they require that acute level of care, I think we'd be honor-bound to provide it.
I should clarify, not my mom, my CASA mom. But to that point, though, would they, would, if they have a patient that is requiring hospital-level care for more than a hundred days, do they need to come to council for a variance for that stay?
If, if the twenty-one-day stay is an average length of acute-level treatment that the facility is intending to provide, and there are patients that need up to one hundred, or even some that might need more than one hundred, I, I guess the, I doubt that the city would view it as a zoning violation unless this facility was somehow converted into a residential facility where the averages were exceeding one hundred days. Maybe Mr. McConnell could offer a comment.
Come to our rescue.
I think I have a solution for you. So the hundred days is a reference to assisted living and long-term care facilities, and the term "long-term" applies to residency of longer than a hundred days. It's really a dividing line between a medical facility and a residential facility. So I think that we can work with the applicant, just to put a simple note in the ODP and PDP documents, that ensures that this is not a residential facility, and we can work with them to put that language in there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Is that okay with you?
Yes, ma'am, that is. Thank you very much. Is there anything else that I can answer for you?
Oh, Mayor Protem?
Not for you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is for our attorney. Does that, adding that note, does that require us to do anything additional on our approval? If we move forward?
Ms. Johnson, would staff be prepared to add that note?
Yeah, well, yes, absolutely. And if you'll note in the agenda memo, there are eight conditions of approval, and at the end of that, I'm sorry, I can't give you a page number, but it's towards the end, the second from the last page, it says, "Any commitment made by the applicant during the public hearing required by City Council for approval shall be identified and included as an additional condition." So.
Thank you. Anything else from council?
I will then open it to, did you have people sign up, or do I?
I have no one signed up for this particular item.
Okay, is anyone here that didn't get signed up for this particular item that wants to speak now? It is your time. I see no one. Do we have anything else from staff to close this up? Anything from the person building it, applicant? City manager, anything?
We're good, ma'am.
Okay. Anything else from, last call for council. Counselor Azadi, I didn't call on you, do you have anything? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I had a question.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Baker?
This really applicant isn't asking for any waiver to any of our rules, right? That's my understanding.
There are two exceptions that they are requesting. So yes, they are asking for two.
And would you refresh me what those two are?
Yes, let me just flip to those. They are two setbacks. One is on the north side of the property, and one is on the south side of the property. It's the setback from improvements to the ditch to the north that requires, the requirement is that it be set back a minimum of thirty feet, and it is not set back at all, it's a zero-foot setback on the north side. On the south side, again, it's supposed to be set back thirty feet, but this time from wetlands, and again, it's supposed, yeah, thirty feet, and, but then in the case on the south property line, they are setting it back ten feet.
Thank you.
Or, no, I'm sorry, they're encroaching ten feet, setting it back twenty feet.
Thank you. And that ditch on the north, it doesn't carry water?
It does carry water, that serves primarily the ranch golf course.
Okay, and is there going to be any foreseeable problem with not having the thirty-foot setback from it?
They, the ranch has reviewed the plans, they don't have any issues with it.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could-
Yes, sir.
-before Ms. Johnson leaves, a question for Ms. Johnson and potentially Mr. McConnell if needed. If we are to include an additional condition number nine, how would you recommend that it read?
I would like to work with the applicant on that, but generally speaking, we would put a note on the ODP and the PDP that ensures that this is a, not a residential facility, it won't be used as such, and we would not put a hard restriction on the number of days that a patient may stay, provided that it is not a residential facility by nature.
Okay, so to facilitate that, would the following language work for condition number nine? "Applicant and staff shall draft a PDP and ODP note to reflect that the facility shall not be a residential facility." Does that-
Yes.
...capture your recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Frankel.
So, council, if that is a proposed condition number nine, I just want the record to be clear, if that's what City Council's voting on, is this project with the eight conditions that were in the agenda memo, plus the ninth condition that we've just described.
Is that everybody's understanding? Counselor Azadi, shake your head. Okay, we have that understanding, the eight conditions, plus this number nine, that you'll work out. And you heard our conversation, so you know well what we were trying to do. Okay. Counselor Seymour? Oh, wait, it is eight-thirty-one, I will close this public hearing, and do I have a motion? Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the First Amendment Preliminary Development Plan for the Tri-State Plan Unit Development, subject to the conditions set forth in the summary of staff recommendations herein, with considerations of condition number nine, that the applicant and staff will note to address the facility is not a residential facility. This recommendation is based on the finding that the Preliminary Development Plan Amendment conditionally generally complies with the criteria of Section eleven dash five dash fourteen of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Item ten A two. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nubella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demont?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote. That brings us to Item ten A three. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the Eighth Amendment Official Development Plan for the Tri-State Plan Unit Development, subject to conditions set forth in the summary of staff, staff recommendations herein, in consideration of adding condition number nine, where applicant and staff will work to note that the, and address that the facility is not to be a residential facility. This recommendation is based on the finding the Official Development Plan Amendment conditionally generally complies with the criteria of Section eleven dash five dash fifteen of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Item ten A three. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Emmons? I just too want to say, I'm excited about this facility, it is desperately needed, and I'm glad it's in our community. So thank you for coming to us, and look forward to working with you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nubella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demont?
Yes.
And Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
Thank you. That brings us to public hearing of Items ten B through ten F, the annexations, and if you do speak to any of these when you come to testify, please state clearly which property you are addressing. And with that, it is eight-thirty-four, I will open the public hearing. Good evening. I imagine you're first up to speak.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor. Mayor Protem, and esteemed councilors. My name is David Gurman, I am the Development Services Coordinator. Are we not on? Thank you. I am the Development Services Coordinator with the city's Community Development Department, and I will be speaking to you tonight on our five annexations. As part of tonight's, bringing this project before you tonight, five staff agenda memos have been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memos with their associated attachments and the public notices that were mailed and posted and published in the Westminster window are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices meet the timing requirement for mailing- The notices meet the timing requirement for mailing, posting, and publishing found in the Westminster Municipal Code. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to approximately three thousand residents within a thousand feet of the properties under consideration tonight. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. The public hearing item... This public hearing item addresses the annexation, comprehensive plan designation, and zoning designation for five separate city-owned properties. The five properties are: The Browell Property, with an address of ninety-eight eighty-nine Alchire Street, and located in the general vicinity of a hundredth Avenue and Alchire Street; The Bushnell Property, with an address of one-two-six-two-zero Zuni Street, and located just south of Zuni Street and a hundred-and-twenty-eighth Avenue; The Deekman Property, with an address of seventy-three seventy-one West Ninety-second Avenue, and located on Ninety-second Avenue west of Pierce Street; The Federal Boulevard South Property, with no address but located immediately south of the BNSF Railroad in the area of West Sixty-eighth Avenue and Federal Boulevard; and, finally, the Moscow Court Properties, with addresses of thirty-four twenty-one and thirty-four thirty-one Moscow Court, located along the city boundary immediately southwest of Westminster Station. Also, an error note for you all. Counselors Bill twenty-two, page four-fifty-four of your packet incorrectly lists that these two properties are in Jefferson County. They're actually in Adams County, as shown in the annexation map on page four-fifty-five. We do apologize for that error.
I looked and looked and looked, and I'm going, "What are they talking about?"
Four of the five properties were purchased by the city to become a part of the city's open space inventory. The fifth property, comprised of the two Moscow Court properties, was purchased for right-of-way for Creekside Drive in the vicinity of Westminster Station and Westminster Station Park. Tonight's proceeding is a cleanup effort to officially and correctly account for these five properties to include: formally annexing the properties into the city, establishing zoning and allowed land uses for each of the properties, and establishing comprehensive land use designations for each of the properties. Staff is recommending that the City Council approves the annexations, zoning designations, and comprehensive planned land use designations outlined in the agenda memos before you. Staff is prepared to answer any questions that you may have, and thank you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? No, seen any. I just had the Adams versus Jeffco.
Yes, ma'am, we do apologize for that.
That's okay. Anybody else have anything from staff? No? Okay. Then I will ask for council com... Or, not... The citizen comments at this point in time. Again, if you're having testimony on any of these annexations from ten-B to ten-F, please state which property that you're talking to us about.
I have two people... Sorry. I have two people signed up.
Perfect.
The first speaker is Lonnie Abad.
Welcome.
Hello. So, I am here to talk about the Allison Community Garden and seven-three-seven-one, the Deekman Property. In Colorado, or not in Colorado, but in Westminster, they say that we can only have one community garden serving an area. So, this plan would be an expansion of the current Allison Community Garden to best fit the community. Right now, the Allison Community Garden has thirty-seven plots available, and it's on historic lands. Because it is on historic lands, it makes it very difficult to make any kind of modifications or changes to those lands. So, using the Deekman Property, we'd be able to expand the community garden and give people a place to grow. When I was looking up the area, I noticed that there were five parcels in the area. There were two that were marked as water, and three that were residential properties. The current plan only refers to the Deekman Property, which, on the map that you guys have in that little packet, is four. But this would be incorporating all of them into one lot for the community garden. The plan for this would be to have an orchard, chicken coops if possible, beehives, and standing gardens that would be... How many? I was doing some math, and I was getting around two-hundred-and-eighty-nine vertical garden plots. They would have three vertical gardens with an eighteen-by-eighteen growing area, and there would be about eighty-ten-by-ten plots. The water for the garden being is... Water is the most important part for any garden. I would prefer for it to be from a well. We are in the, I believe, South Platte Water Basin, and we are kind of towards the end of it. So, if there was a well in that area, it would give us good ideas if there were imminent drought conditions, and give us a better idea of the watershed at the beginning of it. This plan would also include having a store area, so people can purchase seeds, and also do classes as well. The classes that I would plan to be teaching would be like chilies from... Or peppers from around the world, or different kind of culinary classes, where people can try to learn how to cook in different styles. Asian styles, Ethiopian styles, anything from around the world, just kind of opening up the diversity of food that we can have in the community. The biggest thing about this would be turning it into a... I believe the proper designation would be quasi-public, because I plan to stay on the site at all times, just to ensure that the gardens are properly maintained. This is a lot of gardening space that would be used, so I want to make sure that everybody can get viable crop from it.
Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Chris Dimson. Welcome.
Welcome. I'm, Madam Mayor, I was going to speak on Item K. The... Are you a little premature there?
Okay.
The resolution number twelve.
Yeah, that's not on public hearing?
No. But I was told I could speak...
Oh, now for it?
I can speak now, when you're about to do K. What would you like?
To speak on K, it probably should have happened during public comment, because it doesn't have a public hearing along with it this evening.
I was told I would be able to speak when you were bringing K up.
I'm writing your name down, and we'll try to remember to paste that as I'm going through everything. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll be able to come back?
I will. I have your name down.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up?
Sorry, no one else has signed up.
That's okay. Okay. So, if there is anyone that wants to talk on any of these annexations, come on down, just tell us which property you're looking at. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Brian Zender, and I want to talk about the Browell Property. Maybe pass a couple of pictures, if you could pass them around this way. So, I'm the landowner. I own the property that's right to the south of the Browell Property. The Browells have been our neighbors. We've been out there for... My family's been out there for a hundred years. We actually owned the Browell Property at one time, or I didn't. My ancestors did, as part of our farm. I'm happy with you purchasing the open space. I've talked with Thomas Herrera and Lance Johnson out there several times in different things. My concern is, we also have the little golf courses right there, St. Nick Creek Golf Course, okay, on our farm. And the pictures you can see is, we don't have any prairie dogs on there. And my concern is, is when you take the Browell Property, that will actually be right across the fence from us. And I... It really gets difficult maintaining properties when the city allows prairie dogs to basically... You know, I mean, it's go unchecked. I also help, if you're right in that same area there, with... The Sisters of Saint Francis have a property that's right on your open space, five acres. Okay? And so, like, this last week, with the wind and everything, you can imagine when the prairie dogs strip all the vegetation off, all the dust is blowing. And then the snow we got after that made basically the Sisters' property just a muddy mess. I mean, I went up there to put propane in their tanks, or meet the propane up there, and they had a four-wheel drive to get up there. So, my concern is, is that, while I'm happy that it's going to be open space, and I'm glad with that and how it's worked out, I really would like to see some kind of... That there's some kind of management plan, so that the prairie dogs don't come down south into our neighborhood. There's about five or six houses there where we are. My folks' house is right next door to mine, and the neighbors. So, I've actually am hopefully going to meet with Lance Johnson again a little bit later on, because I had... When I met with him before, I talked about the maintenance road that goes back to Westminster's Quonset back there, that if we could have some plan that they maintain keeping the prairie dogs from moving to the south side of that, that would keep it all out of our neighborhoods. And hopefully, that'd be a small enough area that they can maintain, and would be cost-effective. So, that's kind of what I'm looking for.
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you all. And I'm glad you're councilmen, not me. This is a hard thing to sit through.
Thanks. Okay. Oh. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council. City manager. My comments would be concerning the Deekman Property. I think the community needs to be reassured that when this goes through, the property will properly be mitigated of all the environmental issues, tempted if necessary, because there are environmental issues over there that need to be taken into account for the public safety and the environmental safety of the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we... Does the city have anything else on this issue?
No, mayor.
Okay. Then it is eight-forty-seven. I will close the public hearing. And ask if we have a motion to move and pass Counselors Bill number seven. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved past Counselors Bill number seven on first reading to approve the annexation of the property located at nine-eight-eight-nine Alchire Street, also known as the Browell Property.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill number seven. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Nermella?
I just want to respond to the public comment that we heard. I certainly want us to be managing our open spaces in a manner that's not impactful to our surrounding community members. So, I'd definitely be curious to know what our overall approach is, and maybe it's not for, you know, the timing of this particular, because I support the annexation. I just, as we look into our approach to open space management, I know that we obviously need to address the balance between wildlife and just ensuring we're creating safe environments, mitigating for wildfire, et cetera.
Mayor Protem?
Similar to Counselor Nermella, I just was going to have an ask since maybe there's more appropriate time for the discussions of the things that were brought up, that I'm assuming staff will follow up with both of the speakers.
Yes, we will, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
That was my concern too, so I tripled that. Any further discussions? Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Item ten-B-two. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved to pass Counselor Bill number eight on first reading to approve the comprehensive plan designation as city open space for the property located at nine-eight-eight-nine Alchire Street, also known as the Browell Property.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill number eight. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
Oh, sorry.
I vote yes. I'm sorry.
I'm in a zone. Sorry about that. That brings us to Counselors Bill number nine. Counselor Seymour?
I moved to pass Counselors Bill number nine in the first reading to approve designation of zoning as oh-one for the property located at nine-eight-eight-nine Alchire Street, also known as the Browell Property.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes, or second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill number nine. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
And Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Items... Oh, you... Okay. We need a break. So, we'll see you back in five minutes. So we'll see you back in five minutes. Okay, continuing on, we have Counselors' Bill Number Ten. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you. I moved past Counselors' Bill Number Ten on first reading to approve the annexation of the property located at 12620 Zunai Street, also known as the Bushnell property.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number Ten. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker? Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Numella?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
Is there a motion to pass Counselors' Bill Number Eleven? Counselor Seymour?
I moved past Counselors' Bill Number Eleven on first reading to approve the comprehensive plan designation as open space for the property located at 12620 Zunai Street, also known as the Bushnell property.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number Eleven. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Numella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
Next is Counselors' Bill Number Twelve. Counselor Seymour?
Moved past Counselors' Bill Number Twelve on first reading to approve the designation of zoning as O1 for the property located at 12620 Zunai Street, also known as the Bushnell property.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number Twelve. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, if I could briefly, there are two typographical errors in Counselors' Bill Number Twelve that Mr. Gurman identified, I believe, that inadvertently referenced Jefferson County's... Oh, hold on, twenty-two, not twelve. Sorry. And no comments.[962.74][962.76](laughing)
Counselor Numella?
Can I just say, just standing back, I'm just really excited that we have purchased all of this open space, and not to forget that this, while we're trying to breeze through these, because we are greatly supportive of open space, that this is just really exciting. So just wanted to do a shout-out to, especially to our director, sitting there, and has done all this work, so.
He's not even, you know, doing a happy dance out there.
And actually, Mayor, I take back my correction, but there are typos in this one that inadvertently referenced Jefferson County instead of Adams County, so I would ask that the motion be amended. If there were a friendly request to amend that motion, correct any typographical errors that reference Jefferson County where it ought to say Adams County.
I'll accept a friendly amendment.
Second. Approves?
Approve.
Okay, so we have Counselors' Bill Number Twelve approving the typo errors being made correct.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.[1035.98][1036.02](laughing) Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Counselor Emmons?
That's where I thought it was my vote.[1049.82][1049.85](laughing)
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Numella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number Thirteen. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moved past Counselors' Bill Number Thirteen on first reading to approve the annexation of the property located at 7371 West Ninety-second Avenue, also known as the Deekman property.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number Thirteen. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Numella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
And Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number Fourteen. Counselor Seymour?
I moved past Counselors' Bill Number Fourteen on first reading to approve the comprehensive plan designation as city open space for the property located at 7371 West Ninety-second Avenue, also known as the Deekman property.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number Fourteen. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Numella?
All right. I just thought that the idea of having a community garden there is cool, so if that's something that in any of our open space we can look at, I just liked it, so that's all.
Mayor Protem?
I was actually saving my kudos for this whole list for this property. So I've watched over my five years, I've bought quite a few of these properties, and I'm glad to see us taking the next step by annexing them. This one in particular was one that I was asked about because there were so many cars and we've had some fires there, and the first time I asked about it, staff, to their credit, were already working on bringing it back to us to purchase it. So I'm, like Counselor Numella, very happy to see these things moving forward, and they certainly are areas, specifically this one, that have resident attention on them.
Anyone else? I'd just like to ask City Manager, now that we own it, can, at some point in the near future, can we have an update of when everything's going to get removed and all of the abatement that needs to be done and that kind of thing?
Whoops, there we go. Yes, Mayor, we'll make sure we provide an update. We did provide one in the Cow update, you know, two Fridays ago or so, but I don't, we did not include kind of what the projected timeline is, and I think that's really the next big question for us.
Thanks. Uh... Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Numella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number Fifteen. Counselor Seymour?
I moved past Counselors' Bill Number Fifteen on first reading to approve the designation of zoning as O1 for the property located at 7371 West Ninety-second Avenue, also known as the Deekman property.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Numella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number Sixteen. Counselor Emmon... uh, Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moved past Counselors' Bill Number Sixteen on first reading to approve the annexation of the property located at 68th Avenue and Federal Boulevard, also known as the Federal Boulevard South property.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number Sixteen. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker? Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Numella?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Seventeen. Counselor Seymour?
Moved past Counselors' Bill Number Seventeen on first reading to approve the comprehensive plan designation as city open space for the property located at 68th Avenue and Federal Boulevard, also known as the Federal Boulevard South property.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number Seventeen. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Numella?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number Eighteen. Counselor Seymour? Sorry. Counselor Emmons?
Sorry, that's still on me.
Yeah.
Trying to pass that one off. Moved Counsel... moved past Counselors' Bill Number Eighteen on first reading to approve the designation of zoning as O1 for the property located at 68th Avenue and Federal Boulevard, also known as the Federal Boulevard South property.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number Eighteen. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir.
It may sound like a broken record, but it looks like there's a typo on this one that says Jefferson County, where I think the property's in Adams County.
I will accept a friendly amendment to my motion to correct the typo on counties.
Second.
So we have a motion on Counselors', to approve Counselors' Bill Number Eighteen with the correction of the typos included in the bill. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Numella?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Item 10F, and 10F1 is Counselors' Bill Number Twenty. Counselor Emmons?
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to pass Counselors' Bill Number Twenty on first reading to approve the annexation of the properties located at 3421 Moscow Court and 3431 Moscow Court, also known as Moscow Court Properties.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number Twenty. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Numella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number Twenty-one.
I moved to pass Counselors' Bill Number Twenty-one on first reading to approve the comprehensive plan designation as city open space for the properties located at 3421 Moscow Court and 3431 Moscow Court, also known as Moscow Court Properties.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number Twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Yeah, roll call, please.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Numella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number Twenty-two. Counselor Emmons?
I moved to pass Counselors' Bill Number Twenty-two on first reading to approve the designation of zoning as specific plan district SPD for the properties located at 3421 Moscow Court and 3431 Moscow Court, also known as Moscow Court Properties.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number Twenty-two. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, if I could, Counselors' Bill Twenty-two inadvertently calls out Jefferson County, where it should be Adams County.
I approve amendment.[1560.66][1560.70](laughing) I accept the friendly amendment.
Counselors' Bill Number Twenty-two, there's a motion to pass with the clarification of changing the typo of Jefferson County, not Adams County.
I'll second.
Um, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Numella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
And Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number Nineteen. Counselor Emmons? Oh, wait. Sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I got it myself. It should be Mr. Frankel.
Thank you, Mayor. Dave Frankel, City Attorney. I believe the council's vote stands as far as remote participation on this quasi-judicial matter, so that Counselor Azadi can participate fully, but I would like to, if Counselor Baker is willing, engage in a dialogue with Counselor Baker as we prepare to hear the evidence on the, excuse me, Huron Farm subdivision preliminary development plan and official development plan requests. Counselor Baker, I understand that you are a resident of an adjoining homeowners association to the subject property?
Yes, I am.
And as a result of being a member of that homeowners association, have you been the recipient of email correspondence that might be referencing the subject property's request for a PDP and ODP approval?
Yes, I have.
Do you feel that you can be impartial and base your decision on this application solely on the evidence that's presented at this hearing tonight?
Oh, yes, I will.
And that the receipt of emails as part of your membership in the homeowners association does not in any way prevent you from being impartial and able to vote in sort of a non-prejudged way on tonight's requests?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, so, public hearing, do we have staff?
Mr. Caza?
It is 9:14, and I will open this hearing. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. My name is Jacob Caza. I'm a senior planner with the city's planning division. As a part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published in the Westminster window, the mailed notices, and the posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to 23 property owners and one HOA within 500 feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Here's a map of the Huron Farm property. The parcel is outlined in red. The parcel is located at the southwest corner of West 148th Avenue and Huron Street. located at the southwest corner of West one-hundred-and-forty-eighth Avenue and Huron Street. On this slide, you can see the proposed rezoning from oh-one to PUD. You will notice that all of the surrounding properties in the city are already zoned PUD. PUD zoning is required for any property over two acres in size that is seeking to rezone. The preliminary development plan and official development plan would facilitate the subdivision of the property into two lots. A new home would be constructed on the western lot, and the existing home would remain on the eastern lot. The access point for the new home would be to the north along West one-hundred-and-forty-eighth Avenue. The new ODP also requires that the owners of these two lots take over the maintenance of the landscaping within the right-of-way on the south side of West one-hundred-and-forty-eighth Avenue, as is required by city code. Section eleven-five-fourteen of the Westminster Municipal Code contains ten criteria that are to be considered when reviewing rezonings and preliminary development plans. Staff finds that the preliminary development plan generally meet those criteria, meet these criteria as outlined in the agenda memo. Several examples of these criteria are that the PDP is compatible and harmonious with existing public and private development in the surrounding area. Streets, driveways, access points, and turning movements are designed in a safe and convenient manner, and that the PDP will not pre- preclude future public land dedications. For those selected example criteria, staff finds that the PDP is compatible with existing developments in the surrounding area, that the access point is designed in a safe and convenient manner, and that the PDP will not preclude future land dedications. Section eleven-five-fifteen of the Westminster Municipal Code contains sixteen criteria that are to be considered when reviewing official development plans. Staff finds that the official development plan generally meet these criteria as outlined in the agenda memo. Several examples of these criteria are that the plan exhibits sound, creative, or efficient planning and design principles. The architectural design of the structure is compatible in terms of shape, color, forms, and material, and existing streets are suitable to carry the traffic. For those selected example criteria, staff finds that the ODP exhibits sound planning by avoiding the use of a flag lot, that the architecture meets the design standards and reflects some of the common modern home designs, and that the surrounding road network can accommodate the additional approximate ten daily trips generated by the new home. Staff's recommendation is to hold a public hearing and approve the rezoning, preliminary development plan, and official development plan. The planning commission voted to recommend City Council approve the rezoning, PDP, and ODP by a vote of four to one. Staff finds that a recommendation of approval of the applications would meet the city's strategic plan priority of ensure that Westminster offers a diverse range of amenities and activities for residents, businesses, and visitors that honor the city's history and support the arts, parks, recreation, open spaces, and libraries, is met by facilitating infill development within the city. The applicant is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well. Thank you for your attention, and there are several staff members with us this evening, and we'd be happy to answer any of the questions that you may have.
Anyone have questions at this time? See none? We'll proceed with the applicant. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and fellow counselors. Uh, John Spencer, two thousand and nine, West Littleton Boulevard, Littleton. I'm here, uh, on behalf of the applicant. Thank you for having us here tonight. Um, thank you, uh, Jacob, for your presentation. I'll just run through a couple things, uh, a little bit of history on this project with you. Um, the Huron subdivision, uh, was brought about. Uh, the owner has some, uh, additional property and is looking to build a second house on that property for their own purposes, for their family, extended family. Uh, in order to do that, code requires that we need to subdivide the property into two lots, because we can't build two residents on the same lot. Um, and so, in order to do that, we need to rezone from oh-one, from when it was annexed to the city, uh, from Adams County, and then go through the PDP and P-, or ODP processes. I think you see the property here outlined in a couple different, different ways. Um, I, I do want to point out that, um, this is the zoning lot for Adams County. As you can see, the green area is all Adams County, and the pink area is city of Westminster. Uh, when this was annexed in, the properties to the south, uh, did not take part in that annexation, and so this property is in a u- unique position in that it's kind of like a little hallway between two sections of the city of Westminster, or corridors. Um, this plan, uh, outlines what the c-, the existing conditions are. You can see the existing residents, uh, and some other facilities there, and you can see one-hundred-and-forty-eighth with the median. Highlighted in that median is the monument sign for the Quail Hill neighborhood, which is directly to the west. Uh, the site plan shows, uh, the, the subdivision of the two lots. You have Lot One on the east and Lot Two on the west for the new residents. And then this further shows, uh, what the development, what the proposed development is as part of the ODP. Uh, the residence on the west, and then, uh, as staff mentioned, the direct access to one-hundred-and-forty-eighth for the driveway access. Uh, that access was moved as far east as we could move it to mitigate any, uh, adverse effects with the curve coming out for eastbound traffic, uh, along one-hundred-and-forty-eighth coming out of Quail Hill. Uh, this has been passed through and worked through with staff, uh, the city traffic engineer as well. These are some pro- proposed elevations of the residence. Uh, again, it's going to be a, a double level, uh, but it will not have a, it won't not have a walkout basement. But you can see the handsome architecture that's being proposed. These pictures here, uh, show what the residence looks like as constructed. The one on the left is actually what the frontage will look like. The one on the right shows what this residence was built, when it was built, with a walkout basement. So that walkout basement portion is not applicable in this case, but wanted to present these, uh, for perspective on, on what the residence will look like. This is a view from Huron Farm. Um, I'm sure you've seen a, a little bit of the history and some of the emails that have been exchanged. As you, as you come off of Huron into one-hundred-and-forty-eighth, the Quail Hill monument sign is right there in that median, um, which presents one-hundred-and-forty-eighth as the entry to that neighborhood. Uh, that, that one-hundred-and-forty-eighth right-of-way is, however, city-owned property. Uh, however, that median is owned by the Quail Hill HOA. Uh, we are seeking, uh, multiple exceptions from, uh, the subdivision criteria. Uh, they all have to do with larger subdivisions such as mail kiosks, uh, solar lighting, public parks, and, and their, that kind of thing. Um, we've listed them all out here. I won't go through them, because I'm sure you've, you've seen them, but if you have any questions, I'm certainly here to answer any that you might have. Thank you.
Any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have public comment?
We have one person signed up to speak, and that is Sally Platt.
I do not see her. I don't see anybody out in the hallway either, so.
That was the only person we had sign to speak.
Okay. Um, does staff have anything else?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Council, have any questions, comments? Counselor Nermella?
Does staff have any issue with any of the conditions?
For those on, um, listening, the sha-, head shake was no. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I just want to address some of the items, uh, the, uh, emails that came in that were part of the public record itself, that everyone had access to, and so I, I just had some confirmations that, that I wanted to make that address a, a few of those concerns. Um, is that if, um, if impro-, uh, if approved, then part of the ODP would be the maintenance of that south side of one-hundred-and-forty-eighth. That would be on the new residence, and I want to make sure that that would be, since that's part of the ODP, that that, that is enforceable into the future, if that's correct.
Counselor Seymour, so the official development plan, specifically in the landscaping, it's, uh, stipulates that the lot owners of Huron Farm, Lot One and Two, are responsible for the maintenance of the south side landscaping of West one-hundred-and-forty-eighth Avenue in accordance with the landscaping plan that's shown inside this official development plan. Uh, generally preserves the exact same conditions. The largest change will be the land, the driveway addition. But it is in, in there, and it is enforceable by city code.
Very good. And then, um, since we are annexing this into the city, any other, um, applicable, um, code enforcements would be by city, city staff as well?
Counselor, so this is already in city limits, uh, so-
Oh, my apologies. Yes, we're making it PUD, so it's already, uh, applicable to code enforcement, as it is for other issues.
Correct, Counselor.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor Nermella?
Sorry, Jacob. I'm gonna wait till you sit down. One additional question, um, is for the, the access point for the site, was there an analysis of just the, because it's coming around a corner, and just kind of the visibility and safety for this access point?
Correct. Yes, so I, I don't have it up on the screen, but, uh, we did look at the site plant, the site triangle for that curve, and that's when we asked the applicant to push the, the driveway further to the east. And the reason why the house is still sitting further to the west, so it kind of creates that long driveway, um, this property cannot be served by, uh, sanitary sewer. It, uh, it, the slope needed to make the sewage flow in the pipe is not possible due to the height of the sewer system, and they're also beyond four hundred feet distance. So there's going to be a septic tank in that eastern half of the lot, um, just as there is on the existing house, and, uh, they can't move the house further east, but they can move the driveway further east to get out of that site triangle.
Okay. And so you think the resolution then is not going to create any accidents?
Yeah, so the, uh, the other thing is with this subdivision, uh, the Quail Hill is the traffic volumes are pretty low, and the speed limit is twenty-five. Uh, so with pushing that further and then mitigating some of the landscaping, um, one option is to limb up some of the trees and such. Um, it should, uh, not create any potential issues.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Seymour?
Sorry.
Counselor Baker?
Okay, is there any, okay, are there recovery charges on this? Because he's joining into public road on one-forty-eighth?
No, there are no recovery charges due for this property. Uh, the applicant is on the hook to pay for all of the improvements, so the city's not joining in in any sort of costs. It's on the applicant to make all of the necessary improvements.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. If there is nothing else, it's nine-twenty-eight, and I will close the public hearing. And is there a motion for Counselors Bill number nineteen? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to, uh, pass Counselor Bill number nineteen on first reading to approve the rezoning and approve the preliminary development plan and official development plan for Huron Farm subdivision planned unit development. This recommendation is based on the finding that the rezoning preliminary development plan and official development plan are generally supported by the criteria set forth in sections eleven-dash-five-dash-fourteen and alleged eleven-dash-five-dash-fifteen of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill number nineteen. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker? Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-one vote.
That brings us to Counselors Bill number twenty-three. Mayor Protem?
I move to postpone Counselor Bill number forty-nine indefinitely. Do we have to do that one first?
Oh, yes, sorry. Yep. Counselors Bill number forty-nine. Mayor, uh, Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move to postpone Counselors Bill number forty-nine indefinitely. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Oh.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-one vote.
That brings us to Counselors Bill number twenty-three. Um, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move, I move to pass Counselor Bill number twenty-three on first reading to approve the po-, uh, proposed amendments to Title eleven of the Westminster Municipal Code to establish the concept plan review process.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill number twenty-three. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
No.
I, did you say no?
No, yes.
Okay. Just wanted, I wanted to be-
Yes, I said no.
Uh, Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
No.
This, the motion passes on a five-two vote.
That brings us to Counselors Bill number twenty-four. Ma-, Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselors Bill number twenty-four, authorizing the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the amended and restated for-sale development agreement with Downtown Westminster Residents LLC for Block A-four-West, Block A-four-East, Block C-seven, and Block A-one in the downtown Westminster.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill number twenty-four. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Baker?
Yeah, I'd like to know how much money we're giving to, okay, the developer by really passing this, uh, bill.
Economic Development Director Kimball, if you could?
Welcome. I don't think it's on.
Is this on? Okay, thank you. Um, thank you for the question. This, um, this act would give no money to the developer.
Isn't this going to change the criteria that we charge for the property?
No, no, sir. Um, we have a set rate of five dollars per square foot for all of the land, um, considered under this development agreement, and then we have a profit-sharing mechanism in the agreement.
Doesn't this change the profit-sharing mechanism?
It does.
And we can't calculate how much less we'll make because we've raised, well, the square foot before the profit-sharing kicks in?
Uh, we're actually going to make more money with the new, um, the new levels, because as the construction prices have raised, and, uh, throughout the agreement, we have always contemplated using a third-party, um, measure, construction cost index, similar to the consumer price index, but for construction. And as that raises, um, also, the sales prices have increased. So both of these are ratcheting up together, um, in tandem with each other.
I guess I don't understand that. Uh, wasn't there like a three-hundred-dollar-a-square-foot, uh, floor before the profit-sharing arrangement kicked in?
Correct. For, that would have been true for three-seven, uh, C-seven and A-four-East.
Right. So if the sales prices have gone up, wouldn't we be making more, more really profit at the three-hundred-dollar level than if we raised that to three-seventy?
Well, not if they don't get built. So if we, if we don't modify this floor, then there's no motivation for the developer to construct anything, because no one's going to, irrational actor isn't going to do something that's going to lose them money. So therefore, we need to make this modification, so the developer is not losing money on the deal.
Okay, so it, was he not, okay, like, I mean, a sophisticated buyer? Did he not understand the, uh, uh, po-, all the possibilities when he signed the original contract?
Of course.
So why is he threatening not to build?
He's not threatening anyone. Um, he's acting as I think any rational person would. And also, just want to point out that unprecedented, um, experiences of all of us over the COVID-nineteen pandemic, the unprecedented inflation that we've seen, those have what's, that is what's driving this amendment today. Um, there have just been things that are beyond- driving this amendment today. Um, there have just been things that are beyond anyone's predictions. No, I don't think anyone could have predicted COVID-19 or the supply chain disruptions that have caused the increase in costs to labor and construction materials that we are experiencing now in all facets of our economy. It's really uncharted waters right now. And I just want to point out again, in future projects that are contemplated under this agreement, we always contemplated an escalator to that floor. So that's not a new concept. There always was the thought that, okay, well, at least, we were thinking at least in 2024, we'll need to make an adjustment where everyone, you know, before COVID-19, thought we would just clip along at some moderate inflation levels and moderate construction prices. But that didn't happen. So we are here to say, you know, COVID-19 did delay some of this and it's impacting construction and labor force and just-in-time delivery of goods to this day. So that's why we're here to implement that inflationary index a little bit earlier.
Okay. So if, if inflation has pushed the price of things up, shouldn't we be getting a higher per square foot price for, shouldn't, shouldn't, well, the value of our land have inflated too?
Not necessarily. Um, the construction price index has increased over the past two years by, on average, looking at the three major indices, 25%. Um, inflation last year was 9%. Even if you double that inflation, that's 18%. So all baskets of goods didn't increase at the same level. Um, so no, I would say that doesn't necessarily mean that land would increase.
Isn't land in the basket of goods?
Um, not in construction costs.
I, uh, okay, thank you. You've answered my question.
Okay. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, no questions. Just a few statements on this. I live in a world of, of construction and housing rebuilt. And this last year and the year before, the last quarter had seen unprecedented increases in that. Within the three-month period, we're talking about $100 per square foot as a minimum. And none of that had an effect on the land itself. It was just, uh, construction and reconstruction. So I think we've got an opportunity here to reset this as we have done once before as construction costs started to go up. Never have we seen something like has happened in the last 18 months. Um, there are some opportunities. A few things have leveled off. But if, if it comes on a boat or in a container, it's hard pressed to get it here within a year or so. So we're having to deal with that also. And I think being creative in this, this adds to a housing stock that we have not seen in a couple decades in our city. And we want to talk about well-balanced housing stock. This is one of them. Townhomes and condos for ownership. And we have to fight within an atmosphere that our legislature refuses to fix, construction defect. We have not been able to address that. So housing stock for a balance in entry-level townhomes and condos should be about 30% of our economy. We run about 3% along the front range, which is, it, it, it's part of the problem that we have as far as people being able to get into a, a property to start off with. And so Westminster has been unique even going back to 2016 when the city passed some construction defect protections for those builders that do business here. So that was just part of the package as we developed this. And we get, um, we talk about a balance especially in New Downtown. Uh, how many units do we want to have and what type of units? Well, this gives us a, a different look at that so that we have apartments. We have workforce housing as part of some of that. We have own townhomes and then condos as well, too. So this, this helps us balance that out. And it is so unique, in fact, that, um, we have other cities, uh, looking at what we have to offer here, too, as well. So I think this gives us an opportunity to continue to move forward and, and so bring in some residents with different opportunities in the new downtown. So I'll be supporting this today.
Any other comments? Oh, Mayor Protem?
Um, I have one quick question for Director Kimball.
It's been a long night, so you get a little exercise.
And I just want to make sure that my recollection is correct and I'm not misstating the, the facts of the matter with, with this development. So my understanding, you know, listening to the conversation was part of it was they had the three blocks and we had some things built in. Those protections and built in with the timing of they were supposed to build the block that they did, which my understanding is now fully sold out, which is fantastic. And then they were building the other blocks being the block of another set of townhomes and then the condos. Um, those protections, when we worked through that, were for both parties, correct?
Correct, yes.
In order to recalibrate if the, if economic conditions changed. And that's really what, what we're discussing.
Correct, yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that I was, I was right on that. I don't have any other questions, but I do want to, um, put my, my thoughts on this. One of the things that I, since I've been on council, have really sought after in the downtown is the owner occupied. Um, and so this, to what Counselor Seymour was talking about and what really the council's discussed over the last handful of months as we've looked at comprehensive land use and all the different, um, building conversations we've had, it's about balance. And so being able to have some of that missing middle, some of those condos that the, you know, former council were forward-thinking about trying to fix what's happened in the legislature, um, I think that, you know, I couldn't say any better, better than Counselor Seymour did. It's been a, a great thing that staff has done. Um, I'm very excited to actually see that the first block was successful. And I anticipate that they're gonna be successful in the next two blocks. And it's gonna give us some product that, as Counselor Seymour said, we haven't seen in a very long time in the entire state of Colorado, not just Westminster. So I, I will be supporting this tonight.
Counselor Baker?
Yeah, I will not be okay with supporting this. I view this as, uh, we had a signed contract. We were both adults. We knew, we knew, we knew the risks. Uh, we as, okay, the city took a huge risk in selling this for such a tiny amount of money. I think the actual sales for A4 West was $200,000, on which we paid a $50,000 real estate commission. And on A4 East, it was $250,000, which again, we paid a $50,000 real estate really commission because we were participating in the potential upside. And now I see as we're giving our victory and the upside away. Uh, I would much rather, uh, if the builder doesn't want to take these properties, put them back on the market and see what the market has today. So I'll be voting no.
I was with, uh, 12 other mayors over the weekend and they are so excited and gonna be watching this project because their cities also have been wanting this kind of, um, home offering to offer. And so they are wishing us the best and fingers crossed. Um, and I couldn't be more excited that we are finally, finally getting to this. So, uh, seeing no one else? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker?
No.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella? Um, just wondering, should I abstain on this one just because I was initially, I never even asked this, but I just thought of it. Sorry.
Unless you have a financial interest in the project, I don't know what conflict would exist.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And yes. And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to, um, Counselors' Bill number 25. Counselor Emmons?
I move to pass Counselors' Bill number 25 on first reading providing for a supplemental appropriation of funds to the 2022 adopted budget of the general and general capital improvement funds.
Uh, Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill number 25. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to item K, and it is not part of a public hearing. So it is out of character that we reopen public comment, but we have two people that, um, were told that they could, um, testify on this at a later time. So to honor, to hear their comments, I will out, open it for these two people. And Chris Stimson, you're the first one up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry for the confusion earlier. Uh, Chris Stimson, uh, from the Cotton Creek part of Westminster. Uh, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, Counselors' City Manager and Staff. So it appears that we're here a resolution from council tonight on the subject of Senate Bill 23-213, the land use bill that seeks to address the housing crisis in Colorado. I've actually read this bill quite closely and heard from several people with understanding of local housing issues who agree that the bill is necessary but perhaps could be improved with, uh, certain amendments such as requiring developers to include some percentage of affordable or workforce housing in their proposals. Or, for instance, being more specific about the technical assistance and grant money that the bill promises to municipalities. So I look forward to the, hearing the language of the resolution. Perhaps it has a positive spin. Perhaps it includes some amendments suggested by counselors to support the objectives of the bill while maintaining something close to established zoning. Perhaps it recognizes that while we like to keep the perquisites of local government intact, apparently enough cities are reacting unhelpfully to the housing crisis that this bill is absolutely necessary. Is that how the resolution is going to be framed, counselors? In a way that shows the level of concern you all have for those suffering in the housing crisis? In a way that shows you have heard the 70% or so residents polled who agree that housing costs are a problem? I'm looking forward to hearing it. Because when all is said and done, we're not that special. We're not. There are 472 towns and cities in Colorado from Akron to Yuma, and we're somewhere in the middle, probably towards the end of that. I don't know how many of these communities have housing policies that caused this bill to be written, but I would suspect quite a few. And that's why it was written. So I would guess that none of those 472 communities are special. None should be able to acknowledge the housing crisis but consider it doesn't apply to them. And that includes Westminster. So let's hear this helpful resolution and be proud of living in a city that cares. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's James McInnis. I am a resident in town. And, um, I've also read this bill. And while I agree that there are needs for amendments to the bill, um, there isn't a requirement that the city necessarily uptake anything. And the principle of the bill, even if the bill is complete shite, the principle of the bill that we need to address how we house people in an affordable manner in this city, in our state, is absolutely laudable. And I encourage you to, instead of just wholesale dismissing it, uh, in favor of artificially inflated property values, for instance, um, that we actually work with the state to find some sort of a balance. And if we, you know, if we're looking for reasons why a bill like this needs to be created on a state level, it's because local governments, just like ours, in fact, exactly like ours, are doing things like decreasing density in approved areas for residential instead of increasing it, right? So we have low-income or even middle-income people who are getting a divorce, who need to be able to fund their current house where one of the spouses and the kids live, and someplace else that can't afford to live in Westminster. We have older people who want to stay in town because their whole lives are here, but can't afford to if they leave their homes. We have kids graduating from college who want to come home to Westminster but either can't afford, their parents can't afford, don't have space, maybe downsized, but can't live with mom and dad. There's an incredible sense of entitlement to say, no, not here. We're not doing that. To all the people who would be helped by, um, increased density, lower housing costs. So is there any guarantee that housing costs will go down if we increase density? No, we could end up with, you know, townhomes and duplexes that are $700,000 at market rates. But there are limitations in the bill that allow for that sort of thing. So, um, I, I think it's, it's, it's a grand waste of the council's time to publicly oppose this bill on its face. And the effort would be better spent supporting the people who already live in and want to be able to live in Westminster, thinking hourly wage employees who need to work in our businesses, for instance. Um, being able to do that by working with the state to come up with a bill that actually matters. And I don't see local control of land use going away as a result of this bill. Um, and I, I, I think it's overly entitled and incredibly short-sighted for us to just say, nope, not here. So thanks for your time. I appreciate it. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion for Resolution number 12? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution number 12. City of Westminster, opposition to statewide land use and zoning preemptions in Senate Bill 23-213.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselor, Resolution number 12. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Nermella?
Um, I'm gonna vote no on this. And I mentioned this last week when we talked about it during study session. I would like us to put forth some recommended amendments. Um, this is, I appreciate the intent of this bill, but I definitely see that there are, and just like almost every planner in the state, sees that there are some challenges with it. And it really does need amendment. And I would hope that, I, you know, I'd like us to be proactive about it, of, of suggesting amendments and be in the game. So that's all.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'll be voting in favor of this. Um, the best type of government is collaborative government. There was no collaboration on this with any major stakeholder in the state. The number one representative of municipalities and, and cities and towns in our state, the Colorado Municipal League, was locked out of stakeholder meetings. Um, CCI, which represents the county commissioners, was locked out of the discussion. So, um, these type of bills, 107 pages of it, generally take a great deal of stakeholder work. And that is collaboration. And so that's the best time, uh, best type of policymaking is collaborative policymaking. There is no outs on this. Not that, that I've been able to find. It restricts us from even, uh, requiring any parking for any development. And so that's a back way for, uh, cities not to be able to do that. Um, the fiscal note came out this week, uh, $15 million the first year, and then $3 million after that with escalations on that just for the staff to create another department within the Department of, uh, Local Affairs. The bill sponsor, the primary bill sponsor, Senator Moreno, um, has circulated a multi-page bulleted 21, um, thoughts on amendments to this bill. That also is an indicator of a lack of stakeholder input. So, um, every group that I follow of electeds around the entire state has concerns about this. And, uh, at the end of the day, it is a violation of the Constitution of the State of Colorado. So I will be voting in favor. So I will be voting in favor.
Anyone else? Mayor Protem?
So it said that the country was founded on the principle of the primary role of government is to protect the property from the majority. I see this as one of those situations where we can't let the whole state tell a city what to do or to tell an individual property owner what they should do. I am disappointed with the way that this has come about, and it hasn't been in a collaborative fashion. We often hear the term "the housing crisis." I want to give you some examples of mismanagement of a crisis. If you're on a plane, which I'm sure most of you as adults have been on a plane, you're told if there is a situation that you put your oxygen on first. The reason is, is if you don't, then you can't help anyone else. We are looking after the residents who live here already. And I cannot protect the resources of residents who live here already if I'm told by the state how we are to develop and how much we are to develop. We have to be able to be the ones who build to the resources we have, the most important one being water. And so when we talk about being proactive, we just saw how proactive this city is just here tonight. When we look at the different kind of products that we're putting in our downtown, as an example. And again, I'll cite what Counselor Seymour said during that portion of our evening when we talked about what product is in that downtown. However, we do have to balance what we build versus our resources. The state is not going to be able to do that properly. The other thing I would mention is you can't have a one-size-fit-all where the state tells everybody what to do. Because there are cities that, for good reason, haven't done the same amount of things that the city of Westminster have done. There are rural governments that don't have the resources or the staff who come up with the creative solutions in order to do the things that, you know, that might help the situation with housing. So there, I agree, it's a complex thing that needs to be addressed. This just isn't the way to do it. And I think that it's very important for us to be upfront and stand tall and strong when it comes to the rights of our government as far as the city of Westminster, and protecting that for the residents who entrusted us with these positions. So I will be supporting this resolution.
Counselor Emmons?
Thank you. I will be supporting this resolution as well, and primarily because it's lost local control. Once you lose local control, you lose everything. And more importantly, you lose resident voices. And so I believe that this, even if we had amendments to this, it doesn't make sense to have that type of voice because of everything that is outlined in the bill states that it's primarily under DOLA and/or the state, which means there's no participation, there's no voice in anything. So that's primarily the reason why I am going to be voting for this tonight.
Counselor Azadi?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, just speak up.
I would rather us spend more time developing amendments that would make this bill much better than a resolution that just says no to everything. There, as someone who has worked at the Capitol, I could tell you that there are amendments that basically strike out the entire bill, right? That creates whole new bills. So it's not like an amendment means a little change. It could mean very big, large, transformational changes. So I think our time is better spent being, you know, creating value, which is proposing various amendments that we actually want to see here. So that's why I'll be voting no.
And I will be with all of the Metro Mayors on Wednesday morning. I know this is going to be a huge topic of discussion, plus Prop 123. And the major feeling is, just as many of you have said, until we have an amendment that we can look at and make sense, you have to oppose it because otherwise, well, there's a supermajority. It can be run down our throats anyway. So, but because it is in Colorado law, and we can go about other ways of going after what's right if this bill passes, I'm certainly looking forward to that conversation. And if anyone of the seven of us have something you want me to take as a possible amendment, send it to me. I will take it to the table. But at this point in time, there is not a good resolution for amendment, and therefore, why everybody is saying no to it. I put it out on Facebook for people to read because it is time the citizens know what can happen here. And there was another one that we talked about earlier tonight that we've heard has gotten changed because that would even deal with the local owner more than this does. So crazy things are happening. People need to stay aware and know what bills are coming out. And I hope we continue to keep people engaged and understanding. They can read for themselves, but let's get this out there for people to be able to read. Maybe there's someone out there that has great thoughts of how to make a good amendment, but so far, none have come forward. So I'll be voting yes. And could we call for the roll call, please?
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
No.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
No.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-2 vote.
That brings us to Item 10L. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager execute an amendment consultant construction management construction management services contract with Alfred Benish and Company in the amount of $83,203 plus a contingency of $10,000 for a total authorized amount not to exceed $792,339 for the Sheridan Boulevard Multimodal Transportation Improvement Project.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass, Counselors, or Item 10M1. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
And Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Item 10M1. Counselor Emmons?
Thank you. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a development agreement for multifamily housing rehabilitation and preservation under the Westminster Community Development Block Grant Agreement with Brothers Redevelopment Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for significant rehabilitation work needed to keep the East Bay at Hidden Lake Senior Housing located at 3720 West 68th Avenue, structurally safe and in service to qualified low and moderate income residents for a minimum of 20 years.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Item 10M1. Is there any further discussion?
Counselor Nermella?
I would just love to see this go to 30 years, but as a minimum, I'm supportive overall, though.
Counselor Baker?
I looked and looked and couldn't find how many units this rehabilitated. I think the second one rehabilitates 31. How many does this rehabilitate?
Welcome back.
And thank you for the question. Thank you for the question, Counselor Baker. This particular one will rehabilitate 20.
And Baker is basically an arm of Adams County Government, correct?
I don't want to misstate it. I think, I believe it's a unit of government of Adams County, but I don't believe they report directly to Adams County. But it is the Adams County Housing Authority renamed.
So isn't this going to be, I mean, a perpetual low-income property?
Well, we're adding a covenant so that it would remain affordable for 20 years. Right now, there's no covenant on the property. So they could sell it tomorrow, and it could be converted to market rate. Yes.
Thank you. And is there some reason they weren't allocating resources to do the maintenance on the property?
That's a great question as well. Obviously, they're a government entity and nonprofit entity. So as such, to keep the rents low over these many years that the property has been in service, it's just been hard for them. They don't have the ability to raise rents, to raise capital funds. And that's what they've shared with us and why we specifically created this program as we went through the annual action plan development process and got community input and talked to affordable housing providers in the community and our partners. This was one of their major concerns. It said, you know, we know we have major capital projects coming up. Could you please add into your CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Program Annual Action Plan, something so that we might be able to have some funds to do these capital needs? Because they're not, well, for the fact that they're capital improvements, they're not annual operating expenses. They have been able to make that work with the current rents there, but because they're not for profit, because they have a community and they're community-driven, mission-driven, they just, they don't have that level of profit.
Where did we get the money from? Because I was under the understanding, is this the CDGB block grants?
Yes, sir. That's correct. This is a formulaic grant that's given to all municipalities across the United States. It's a similar formula, and it's given by the federal government through housing and urban development.
How does this differ from our other CBG grants?
Um, it's our-
The ones that we argued about, and we gave like $200,000 to some other Adams County housing program, didn't we? It was, it was really back when we argued over what to do with Knox Court, and it was suggested we use CBG money for that, but no, we couldn't do that.
I think in that instance, and I am going off my memory, which sometimes is not 100% correct, but I, to the best of my recollection, what we had talked about, because there is a HUD, there's always a HUD process, there's always a federal process, the timing to get that money programmed and change and make an amendment to the annual action plan that was already filed, and the comprehensive plan, which is filed every five years for the CDBG funds, not the, not the city's comp plan, I'm sorry, I misspoke, our consolidated plan for CDBG. You, there was just, we mapped it out, and it was about a year-long process just to be able to let HUD spend the money on that. So the timing was an issue there. That is my recollection of why we did not use CBG money for that.
So my money is, where did this money? My question is, where did this money come from?
This money came from our annual allocation that we received from the federal government.
2023?
2023, and a combination of past years' funds that were unspent. So we do, just to give you round numbers, we generally receive about $600,000 a year. So we had that money in the bank, so to say, and already noted in our consolidated plan for CDBG and our annual action plans over the past years that that would be used to fund a certain type of capital improvement program for the preservation, not the creation of more, but just the preservation of our affordable housing stock.
And what's going to happen 10 of the years from now when they're in another jam?
I would say that would be up to this body to consider that at that time. We, but this is actually our first, this is our first two projects utilizing what we call the Housing Lift Program, which is very innovative, and it's a brand-new tool across the board. We have these two applicants as our test. So we always want to spread the wealth and not just benefit one of our partners. So, you know, I think we would be open. We have a formal application process where all the applications are waited through a rubric and considered carefully. You know, this year, we had two applicants and two spots, which worked out well. It wasn't by design. But, you know, it might be more competitive in future years.
I just have concerns how it's going to be self-OK sustaining. If it hasn't been in the past, and we're helping out in a tight spot, how are they going to accomplish self-sustaining in the future?
You know, I think that's a goal of any nonprofit, to be self-sustaining, and it's also a challenge. I've worked on a lot of nonprofit boards, and I'm sure they want to be self-sufficient. And I know that they're very aggressive to apply for all kinds of grants available to them. You know, this money, as I said, is in our bank account now for CDBG. It's programmed appropriately. We have two partners that have a demonstrated need and a demonstrated capital gap. So it is staff's recommendation that we do move forward with these two so that the money can be put and implemented in our community.
Where else could, where else could really this money have gone?
Well, you know, we also fund our emergency home improvement repair program out of this, which provides, you know, modest grants for homeowners, primarily senior homeowners, who we want to help them stay in their homes and maintain that affordable housing for them. Also, we have programmed in programs we've done in the past to, for example, along 72nd, Brown Hooker, to do some pedestrian improvements in a low-to-mod income neighborhood. So that's another thing that's being considered. We have different, we've had, this program has been on the books. We're now implementing it. It's been in the annual action plans for the past two or three years? Three years. Thank you, Molly. For the past three years.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Emmons?
Lindsay, I would stay there. Just confirming that this, because I like to take notes and go back and make sure that everything's aligned. This, you have brought this, the consolidated plan to us, I believe it was sometime last year. And it outlined the goals for CDBG, the proposed allocation. So this isn't the first time that we're seeing this, right? I just, I would like to understand just a little bit because, now, this is, I'm looking at what we had as a presentation in June of 2020, excuse me, 2022. Obviously, that's almost a year ago now. But in that proposed allocation for affordable housing preservation, it lists an allocation of about $200,000. So just, just kind of wondering and looking at notes here, why are we up to $500,000? Do we reallocate? Like, how, what's the?
Sure. So I call this another HUDism, or we call them a HUD-egg sometime, but... So when they're, they give us an annual allocation, we also track and monitor all of our funds by program year. So it gets a little, it's a little complicated, a little federal of them. But we can take funds in past annual action plans that we allocated to this objective of preserving housing, and HUD is fine with us using past years, past year allocations, combining them, and now getting them out the door.
Okay, great. I just want to confirm that this isn't anything new that's come before us, that we've talked about this, we've seen it, presented from staff, so I'm good with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say, I've been many times to East Bay. They're a wonderful community. Keep the entire place spot-on clean. The residents, I've been in their rooms when I've served Meals on Wheels. And so many of them are single. There's a few that are husband and wife, but many have been widowed or are single. And they become a community, a strong community. And their little coffee shop with donuts and things, and I know our officers go in and talk with them. They love it. They have a beautiful porch to just sit out there, and you'll hear musicians out there playing for people. And in the back, they have a wonderful community garden that they all take interest in. And you better not pick somebody's squash if it's not yours. And so I love them because it sits on a beautiful area there by the lake. It is a wonderful facility. because it sits on a beautiful area there by the lake, it is a wonderful facility run by great people, and I'll be voting for this, so thanks for all your work on it.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, go ahead. I just have one question, just to clarify, I know I was asking for, I'd love it to be thirty, but I'm just curious why it ended up being just a twenty-year timeframe on the affordability covenant?
We were looking at, you know, some of the standards that HUD uses, has, or other communities have used that have been accepted by HUD, so the twenty years was what we initially proposed and what they were comfortable with as well.
Well, if we're going to invest, I'm just kind of curious, as we move forward, can we set higher standards for affordability, like a longer timeframe?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, just be, as the, as the manager, yeah.
Be sure to talk into the microphone, microphone, microphone.
I thought it was really loud. Last year in June, when we did, I'm Molly Tayer, I'm the Housing Coordinator in Economic Development, and last year in June, when we did bring this in for a review with all of you, you did ask if we could get to thirty years. I'm looking at various layers of different use restrictions on these two properties at present, and so I'm trying to piggyback on top of some that already exist, we're going to be carrying it forward for up to thirty years for each of them, and I can send those to you if you'd like to see them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Baker, did you have something else?
No, sorry.
Okay. Counselor Azadi, did you have anything? Okay, roll call, please. Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to item 10N1. Counselor Nermella?
I'll move to authorize the City Manager to execute a development agreement for multifamily housing rehabilitation and preservation under the Westminster Community Development Block Grant Agreement with Maker Westchester LLC in an amount not to exceed five-hundred thousand dollars for significant rehabilitation work needed to keep the Westchester Apartments located at 7240 Newton Street structurally safe and in service to qualified low and moderate income residents for a minimum of twenty years.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item 10N1, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
It is now ten eighteen, we'll adjourn this meeting and immediately go to our Westminster Economic Development Authority meeting, incorporating the roll call from our past meeting, and we have minutes of February thirteenth. Move to approve the minutes of February thirteenth, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes of the February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting as presented.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's just you started on the wrong sheet.
I thought Abby was trying to make me look silly, and I made myself look silly.
Okay, there is resolution 225. Do I have to call for a public hearing on this?
No.
Okay. Director Emmons?
I move to adopt resolution number 225, authorizing the Westminster Economic Development Authority Executive Director to execute the First Amendment amended and restated for sale development agreement with Downtown Westminster Residents LLC for Block A4 West, Block A4 East, Block C7, and Block A1 in Downtown Westminster.
Vice Chair?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass resolution number 225, is there any further discussion? Counselor Baker?
I just, I'll be voting against this, of course, like I did previously. I'm just very disappointed, I see this as nothing but welfare for a competent economic player, and we shouldn't be doing that, so I'll be voting against it.
See no one else, roll call, please. Board Member Baker?
No.
Vice Chair Demat?
Yes.
Board Member Emmons?
Yes.
Board Member Azadi?
Yes.
Chairperson McNally?
Yes.
Board Member Nermella?
Yes.
And Board Member Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote. That brings us to resolution 226. Board Member Emmons?
I move to pass resolution number 226, authorizing the Executive Director to execute a purchase and sale agreement with Downtown Westminster Residents LLC in substantially the same form as attached for the development of thirty-one townhomes on Block C7 in Downtown Westminster located at approximately Ninety-Second Avenue and Eaton Street.
Vice Chair Demat?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass resolution 226, any further discussion? Roll call, please. Vice Chair Demat?
Yes.
Board Member Emmons?
Yes.
Board Member Azadi?
Yes.
Chairperson McNally?
Yes.
Board Member Nermella?
Yes.
Board Member Seymour?
Yes.
And Board Member Baker?
No.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote. It is ten twenty-two, and we are adjourned.